Hi, good morning and welcome to the June 19th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This weekend, we have an Environmental Resources event, so I'd like to bring up Susan Erlandline to talk about it.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning, Commissioners. You know, we've all seen commercials on TV that talk about how great a cleaning product is, and we look at it saying, wow, I could use that, sounds too good to be true. And then you buy it and discover, yeah, it was too good to be true. And it was a bunch of hype, and you end up putting that product in a cabinet never to use again. Or you're cleaning the garage and you find a can of paint, and it's like, wow, I remember this, we used it in the baby's room, and I kept it for touch-up. Then it dawns on you, baby's in college now, and the room's changed colors three times since then. Maybe it's time to get rid of that paint and those cleaning products you never use. Sedgwick County can help you with that. We have a household hazardous waste facility. You can bring those cleaners, paints, oils, gasoline, pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers, all of that to our facility for free if you're a Sedgwick County resident. The facility's located at 801 Stillwell, and it's open Tuesday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturdays 9 to 1. But in order to better serve our community, we also have remote household hazardous waste events. Our next event is this Saturday, June 22nd. It's located at the Calvary Baptist Church in Derby, that 1636 East Patriot. So we invite anyone in Derby or the surrounding area to come and bring your household hazardous chemicals there for free disposal. Again, that's this Saturday, June 22nd, from 9 to 1 at Calvary Baptist Church in Derby, 1636 East Patriot. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kate. Do we have any questions for Susan this morning?
No.
I don't see anything. We got a big agenda today, so I think they're anxious to get into that, but thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, and July 4th is just two weeks away. Since this is the last commission meeting before the holiday, Elora Forsey here with 911 has information on the non-emergency line.
Morning, Elora.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Elora Forsey, you're 911 Director. We are rolling right along through the summer into our busiest holiday, our busiest season at 911, which is the 4th of July. If you can recall, five, six years ago, we started our non-emergency number. That's to ensure that people that have life-or-death emergencies can get through on 911 lines, and that firework complaints or nuisance complaints have their own dedicated number to call so that they're not clogging up the 911 lines. That number is 290-1011, 290-1011. We will be staffing that July 1st through July 6th, every night this year, from 6:00 PM to 2:30 AM. We invite people to use that line if they are reporting fireworks, whether they believe them to be legal or illegal, any loud parties, general nuisance complaints, things that are not eminently in danger, or there's no imminent danger, no crime actually occurring. We want them to use that line. The calls are still handled by 911 professionals, and the information is still related to first responders, but again, it helps those calls to stay out of the 911 system to make sure that path is available for when we have injuries, fires, things like that, that need a more immediate response. So, again, we encourage the public to use that. If they do dial 911, if they can't remember that number, we will push those calls over to that non-emergency line. So, there's really no way to get around using it during this holiday, and it's simply because it is our busiest time of the year. So, we encourage everybody to have a safe 4th of July, and to be mindful of fireworks and their neighbors, and we hope they don't have to call us, but if they do, we will be there, of course.
Very good.
Any questions?
Thank you, Elora. We have a great 911 facility over here with great operators, but they are very busy individuals, and so we do urge you to use the non-emergency number so that we don't tie up emergency lines for people that really need it in an emergency. We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and we do have a lengthy agenda this morning. We have two meeting minutes, or excuse me, meeting minutes, two proclamations, several advisory board appointments, a presentation regarding comcare support to an employee serving overseas, we have some special guests here in the audience for that, a recognition of the Sheriff's Office for an award, the Register of Deeds has a new program they'd like to launch, we'll have public hearings related to the Domestic Waterwell Code, the International Building Code, and the international existing building code, a consideration of a funding agreement between USD 259 and comcare for mental health services, a KDHE permit application for relocation of a medical waste transfer station, you'll receive the 2019 Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Plan, a report from the Tire Waste Collection Event held earlier this year, and then there's a resolution establishing the solid waste fees for 2020. You'll receive the Wichita Places for People Comprehensive Plan Amendment Presentation, and finally, there's a grant award from KDHE for the Health Department, and following your regular meeting, Commissioners, you do have a fire agenda. So Chairman, you can have the meeting.
Well, thank you very much, Kate. As you heard from Kate, we have a very busy meeting today with a lot of things that are going on. I want to welcome everyone that's in the audience with us today, those that are joining us on KPDS, and those that are joining us online. Also, I always try and recognize elected officials who are in our audience. Today, we have Tanya Buckingham in our audience, our Register of Deeds. I want to welcome her, she's actually going to speak on one of the items later today, but I do want to make sure I recognize our elected officials. And with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, June 19th, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Indication to be led by W.E. Hamblin, Emporia Avenue Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Let us pray. Our Holy Father, we thank you for the light of a new day. We cannot anticipate altogether what may occur in this day, but we ask you to be with us, and we pray for peace. As we find our country in volatile times, we pray that you will bless our leaders, that they may make decisions that will preserve the peace that we have enjoyed for so long. And we pray, Father, that you will be with us in our meeting here today and in other places that we go, that peace may reign in our hearts. We ask your blessings upon this group of Commissioners as they have volunteered themselves to serve, to lead, and to help the rest of us who live in this immediate area. We pray you bless them today in all that they deliberate, and that in any action motions that are decided, that those decisions will be made with keeping the peace and safety and the well-being of all the citizens of Sedgwick County and our surrounding area preserved. Bless them always to that end. And we ask you to bless these citizens who have given their time to come today, to contribute, to learn, and to share. We pray, Father, that peace may always prevail in these meetings, that civility may always be uppermost, so that the greatest good may occur for our welfare, and that our environment may be one that is enjoyable, that may be safe, and a good place for us to rear children, and to grow old even, so that we feel safe. Bless us to that end always. We ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here with us today, we appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I have two individuals signed up to speak on public agenda. First, Ms. Ruth Baker. You approach the podium and state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
I'm Ruth Baker. I want to talk to you about the issue met with yesterday on the groundwater issue down in the Derby, Mulvane, Hayesville area. You have to excuse me, it's been a while since I've done some public speaking. I live outside of Mulvane in Commissioner O'Donnell's district. I currently live near the corner of Hillside and 103rd Street. To put that in perspective, I live about a half-mile from the Derby Water Wells, number 10 and 11, that you saw on the maps yesterday. I've also lived in Hancock Acres, which is just up off of 83rd Street, just outside of Derby, and I've lived in these two areas since 2007. In 2016, we had standing water in our basement for four weeks despite having three industrial-grade sump pumps. Many of our neighbors are the same way. After the first flood in '08, many spent thousands of dollars adding French drains under their basement floors, adding sump pumps and putting piping under our yards to pump the water as far from our houses as possible. We are mostly a self-sufficient bunch, and we rarely turn to the county for help. This is not just a property value issue or a hazard issue, it is also a health issue. Many of us have kids. This water just doesn't come in, damage our drywall, and leave. It lingers for weeks at a time. Once again, I have had standing water in my basement for four weeks in 2016. At present, the water has been in my basement for three weeks, and based on the water table and continuing rain, I expect it for another three weeks. We are not looking for handouts, just help getting the problem under control. A majority of us citizens have done everything we can to fight this on our own property. Had Derby not shut off the wells, we would not be in this position. My neighborhood of Southwood Farms and Hancock Acres were built in the 70s. We had no flooding issues until '08. That's 30 years of no flooding, and within a year of the Derby wells being turned off, we received flooding. I understand that we are receiving record rainfall. I understand this doesn't happen every year. Keep in mind, we had a flood in '08, and it was followed by a five-year drought. We have now had flooding in 2016 and 2019. I believe if this problem is not fixed, we will be dealing with it again within five years. One health issue that hasn't been discussed is what this does to our septic systems. A typical septic tank is buried just below the ground. Crandall Johnson at 1517 East 85th Street has sewage starting to back up into his basement. There's another home on Hillside that I expect you will be hearing about soon that has river sand running through it. The family is carrying out sand by the bucketloads. You ask for damage reports, but the damage has already been done by the previous floods. We can't report damaged drywall because most of us never replaced it. Most of us didn't waste our time rebuilding our basements, believing it was just a matter of time before it happened again. We hope that you will vote to turn the Derby Water Wells on. Either way that you vote, I ask that we work together to find a long-term solution for this problem. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been thinking about this since our meeting yesterday, and just for everyone's knowledge, we had a staff meeting yesterday where this was kind of discussed at length for about an hour, and so today, it'd be my intention, between items I and J, to add an off agenda item for us to discuss this and potentially have a motion to vote. So with that, I just want you to be aware of my intention today. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I also have Ann Fox signed up, but I think she wants to speak on Places for People today. Would you rather speak during that portion of the agenda or now? Okay, we'll wait for that. And since we are changing a few things around, we do have a number of people that are in the audience for the Places for People, and we're going to move that up on the agenda to right after the, as we start the new business, so that we can get on to other business. So I just want all the Commissioners to be aware that we are going to change the agenda a little bit, and I'll make a motion to that at the right time. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of June 5th, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to view the minutes for June 5th, 2019. Move to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations. Item B, Proclamation Declaring Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Thank you. We have a proclamation this morning that I've asked Commissioner Howell to read.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am honored to read this proclamation this morning. It says, "Whereas 54,000 Kansans have Alzheimer's disease, and 5.8 million people in the United States have Alzheimer's disease, and whereas every 65 seconds, someone is diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease, and whereas 151,000 Kansans are caregivers who are providing 172 million hours of unpaid care, and whereas the direct and indirect cost of Alzheimer's and other dementias amount to more than $290 billion annually, and whereas the state of Kansas and the county of Sedgwick are committed to supporting families suffering from the disease with education, information, and research to find a cure and help them through the disease. Now therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens." Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we would adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. We have a motion, and I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, this will be accepted by Jamie Gideon of the Alzheimer's Association if she's here.
Good morning, Ms. Gideon, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It will do a lot to help raise awareness here in Sedgwick County. I did want to mention a couple activities that are coming right up, that everyone should be aware of. Just to hear, in a couple of days, on June 21st, we have what's called the Longest Day, which is the summer solstice. It's the day that has the most light, and during that day, the world will participate in fundraising activities in order to fight the darkness of Alzheimer's. For information on local activities, please see our local website at als.org/cwkansas. And then we have two more activities also coming up. We have our annual Wichita Walk to End Alzheimer's. It's held on World Alzheimer's Day, September 21st, 2019, at Wichita State. And then, the last event is our 8th Annual Kansas Education Conference on Dementia, and it's held at the Kansas Star Event Center, Thursday, November 14th, 2019. And the conference will focus on diverse populations impacted by dementia. Again, for more information, you can contact our local office for that. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you for being here and for bringing the awareness to this, at this time, and I hope that you would send me those events, so I can continue to remind the public as we get closer to those events. I'd like to continue to keep awareness on these opportunities. And me personally, I know everyone in the, everyone in the community has challenges in life, and there's no one, I think, exempt from that, but for me and my family, we're struggling right now with my mom, who is, has, I think, a fairly severe case of dementia and Alzheimer's, and watching her decline over the last three years has been very hard for us, and so I, my heart goes out to everyone who's dealing with this situation, and it's overwhelmingly difficult, and you have a family member that's losing their memory. So with that, I just want to say thank you for bringing awareness to this, and I appreciate what you're doing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
You can't leave, Jamie. I know, so Faye's out of town, so you're here, so you're a great fill-in. I wanted to mention a couple things. You guys were the designated charity from the County Treasurer's Office last month. Myself and Treasurer Kazire came down. It's a great project. I think everyone continues to be impressed with what the Alzheimer's Association of South Central Kansas continues to do, to bring exposure to it. Would you talk about your gala that you just had? Because it was huge, right?
Yes.
I mean, record-setting, what you guys are doing.
Yes, it was our only second gala we've had, and we broke the record from last year. We raised more than $400,000 for the cause. And all that money stays here in the county. So, that goes direct to assistance for caregivers and those with a disease. We had a lot of people volunteer, a lot of people donate, it was all local. Everyone had, plus, a great time as well. It was at Mark Arts, and we're ready to, already getting ready for next year. So, we'll get that information also to you for next year, for any of you that's able to go, we would love to have you. But it's definitely, again, brought more awareness to the disease, and also brought the needed money that we need for help and support for people.
I just continue to be spellbound and inspired by what you guys continue to do with the Alzheimer's Association, so thank you, and tell Faye that I missed her.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Howell.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here today, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Proclamation Declaring National HIV Testing Day.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas, National HIV Testing Day, NHTD, is an annual observance to encourage people of all ages to get tested for HIV and to know their status. And whereas, this year's theme, Doing It My Way, highlights how and why people make testing part of their lives on their own terms, in their own way. And whereas, an estimated 1.1 million people in the United States has HIV, including approximately 16, I'm sorry, 162,500, 14% of which is 1 in 7 people who do not know that they have it. And whereas, CDC recommends that everyone between the ages of 13 and 64 get tested for HIV at least once as part of their routine healthcare. People with specific health risk factors should get tested at least once a year. Whereas, if you have HIV, start HIV medical care treatment as soon as possible. Staying in HIV medical care can keep you healthy and help protect others. And whereas, for everyone getting tested is an opportunity to discuss how different behaviors and prevention options affect someone's risk for getting HIV. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim June 27th, 2019 as HIV Testing Day. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, move to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And accepting that is Chris Stewart from Sedgwick County Health, welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners and Board of Health, for allowing me to update you on National HIV Testing Day, which is next Thursday, June 27th. I'm Chris Stewart, Health Protection Director with the Sedgwick County Health Department. To remind about the importance of HIV testing, the Sedgwick County Health Department has promoted National HIV Testing Day since 2007 with an announcement about free testing. On Thursday, June 27th, the Health Department will offer free conventional HIV tests from noon to 5:00 PM. Walk-ins are accepted, but you can call 316-660-7300 for an appointment to avoid a longer wait. In November 2018, the Sedgwick County Health Department started making HIV tests available at no cost every day for individuals who have never been tested, and annually for high-risk residents. This year's National HIV Testing Day theme, Doing It My Way, is a call to action that encourages people to get tested for HIV. You can test at the Sedgwick County Health Department, your medical provider's office, at another testing site, or even at home. You can test alone, or go with a partner, friend, or family member. However you choose to do it, it is important to get tested and know your current HIV status. People may not know they have HIV, so testing is important. Positive tests help medical providers diagnose HIV infection and prescribe treatment that reduces the amount of virus in the body, decreases the chances of transmitting HIV to others, and keeps a person healthy for many years. Sedgwick County Health Department Disease Intervention Specialists, or DIS, work with area medical providers to investigate and provide counseling and testing for persons having or at risk for HIV, to control the spread of disease. We thank you for joining us to raise awareness about the importance of HIV testing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chris, for that. I, in addition to the work that's being done at Sedgwick County, I just want to point out that we have an incredible nonprofit here in our community called Positive Directions, who takes these tests and makes them available in the community, so in different nightclubs, in different places around town. So in addition to being able to get tested at Sedgwick County Health Department, there are other options that you might feel more comfortable utilizing, so be sure to reach out if you need help. I think that a long time ago, I had a friend who told me he had AIDS, and it was one of the most shocking things ever in my life, and now it's a lot different than it used to be in the 90s. So I think that we've come a long way, and I really appreciate the work that's being done, because it's kind of scary, and just the awareness that's being made, I think, makes it a little more easier to swallow and to get help if you need it. So, there are opportunities, if you need some help, and you don't know who to call, call me, and I'll help you find a place. So, thank you so much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you being here today, and thanks for everything you do for our health of our citizens in Sedgwick County.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item D, Resolution Nominating John Hennessey Jr. for Consideration of Reappointment to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Mr. Pupun.
Good morning, Commissioners. My opinion of County Council. This is a board that makes recommendations to the city of Wichita, particularly the city councils, relating to the issues involving the airports, Eisenhower, Rivera. Part of their ordinance, Sedgwick County gets to nominate five people to this board. Today, you have before you, on behalf of Commissioner O'Donnell, the nomination of John Hensley Jr. to that board. And of course, this is just a recommendation of a nomination, the city council will be appointing Mr. Hensley. Resolutions in proper form, we ask that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I do not see John Hennessey in the audience, and I think we all would know if he was there. Mr. Hennessey is one of my top 10 favorite people in the world. I love him. He was my appointee on the Wichita City Council, and he turned off there, so I appointed him a couple of years ago, and he's up for reappointment, so it's fun to watch him come back and forth. But he is gone today, but I still would like to make the motion, and we'll just get him up to Mr. Arnold's office here in the next couple of weeks to take the oath. So with that, I move that we appoint John Hennessey Jr. to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board.
Thank you. Second motion, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item E, Resolution Reappointing Michelle Shaheen to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board.
Thank you. Mr. Pupun.
Commissioners, Items E and F can be taken together. These are both appointments to the Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board. This is a 15-member board, each county commissioner gets to make recommendations for three members of that board. Item E is a reappointment on behalf of Commissioner Meitzner, of Michelle Shaheen, to that board, and Item F is a resolution appointing Dalton Glasscock, Commissioner O'Donnell's recommended appointment to this board. Though E and F have resolutions that are in proper legal form, we ask that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. I'll start with Commissioner Meitzner, and then go to Commissioner O'Donnell. Well, I appreciate it. I don't know Michelle real well, but she has been on this before, and I'm glad to reappoint her to keep serving. Do you want to make a motion? Well, I'll make a motion for Michelle. Very good. And Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we appoint Dalton Glasscock. Dalton is a great guy, one of my top 20 favorite people in the world. Anyway, but Dalton's done a lot in the community, and he currently chairs the Sedgwick County Republican Party, and serves on a lot of boards, and will, I think, bring great perspective because he's young, energetic, and civically-minded, so I'm excited for Dalton to get on that board. So I'll make a So I'll make a motion for Dalton Glasscock.
I'll second both of those motions. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And I know Dalton's here. Michelle?
Yeah.
Is Michelle here?
All right. Please. Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Mental Health Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do. Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Commissioners Cruz, Meitzner, Howell, and Chairman Dennis, thank you for confirming Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment for me for the Mental Health Advisory Board. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for the appointment as well. Having friends, families, and neighbors, and seeing them, and also assisting them and using Calm Care services over the years. I know the importance of Calm Care here in the county, and also just the importance of mental health services here in the county as well. It's one of the most critical components that the county has, and I look forward to continuing to help find solutions for our mental health crisis here in Sedgwick County and across the community as a whole. So thank you again for the appointment, and I look forward to serving.
Well, thank you, Dalton. Thanks for being here today. I've known Dalton for quite a number of years. I appreciate everything he's done for Sedgwick County.
Sure.
And I should have recognized Kelly Arnold, who swore you in today. How we try and recognize our electeds, and again, Kelly Arnold's here, and he'll be doing this a couple of times today.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for being here. All right, Dalton. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item G, resolution appointing Michael Wano to the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for onsite water well construction.
Mr. Papoun?
Commissioners, this board oversees the construction of these onsite water wells. Most of the appointments come from various disciplines, such as farmers and realtors. But this happens to be just the board appointment at large, and so far, this appointment is vacant. So you will be appointing Mr. Wano to, as the at-large position to this board. Resolutions in proper form, ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. I move that we approve Michael Wano.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Is Michael in the room? Very good. Thank you. And Kelly Arnold will swear you in.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge my duties of the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for onsite water well constructions, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Commissioners.
You have anything else you want to say?
No. I appreciate the appointment, and I'm happy to help the advisory board make sound decisions with water wells in the county.
Very good. Well, Chris Abrams in the back of the room, you're probably going to get annoyed pretty well if you don't already.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item H, resolution appointing Maggie Ballard to the Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county councilors. Items H and I can be taken together. I believe these are probably the final two appointments to Commissioner Cruz's Citizens' Advisory Board. First resolution recommending appointing Maggie Ballard to this board, and Item I is a resolution appointing Paul Davis III to the Citizens' Advisory Board. Both the resolutions are in proper form, and I ask that you approve the resolutions.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes, I see Maggie here today. I don't see Paul, though. Are you fighting somewhere, Paul? No? Okay. Before I make a motion, I just want to kind of point out, so within my district, it's very large. We encompass a lot of area, Riverside, Valley Center, Park City, Northeast, North End, Mays, all of those different areas. And so what I tried to do with these appointments, Maggie will represent Riverside area, Paul will represent Valley Center, and so that was how I was able to kind of make sure that I had a good representation on my Citizens' Advisory Board that knew the district, that we had somebody representative of each area. So I'm so excited that you're here, Maggie. She also serves on the Mental Health Advisory Board. Her son is also a rock star in donations of a food pantry here in town and all across everywhere. I mean, it seems like he's in another, doing something new every single day. Wow. But I'm excited to have these people on the board. Paul Davis, who's not here, he serves on the Valley Center City Council, so he has been serving on that board for quite some time. So I'm excited to have these two, and we'll make a motion to appoint Maggie and Paul to my Citizens' Advisory Board.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And Maggie's here. If you can get sworn in, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board, so help me God.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Same thing.
I just want to say thank you. I'm looking forward to serving on this board and doing the best that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to serve. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, before we go on to new business, I'd like to make a motion that we move item Uniform up to the next item to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to do an off-agenda item, so I could do this either before this or after this. Either way.
Do that after.
That'd be fine. Do it afterward. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And Maggie's here. If you can get sworn in, thank you.
Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Sedgwick County Fourth District Citizens' Advisory Board, so help me God.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Same thing.
I just want to say thank you. I'm looking forward to serving on this board and doing the best that I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering to serve. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, before we go on to new business, I'd like to make a motion that we move item Uniform up to the next item to discuss.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I also would like to do an off-agenda item, so I could do this either before this or after this. Either way.
Do that after.
That'd be fine. Do it afterward. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Please call item Uniform.
Item U, Wichita Places For People Comprehensive Plan Amendment for an Approximately 62-Square-Mile Area, generally located between 29th Street on the north, 31st Street on the south, Ridge Road on the west, and Rock Road on the east.
Thank you. Good morning.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mary Hunt with the Planning Department. Wichita Places For People, as you may recall from last week, is derived from the Community Investment Plan adopted by this body in 2016. And some of the goals in that plan include an urban infill strategy, where we want to promote infill development. We also want to attract and retain the talent that we desperately need to keep our community prosperous. And of course, we want to take care of what we have. I want to go over the planning process that took place here. Initially, what we did is started with funding. We have a funding partnership with WAMPA, which is the Wichita area metropolitan planning organization. They secured for us approximately 80% of the funding that we needed from federal sources, and then the city provided the small match that's necessary. And from that, we hired Gould Evans Consulting to help us develop a plan for the infill strategy. And as any plan should have, any respectable plan would have, is a considerable amount of public engagement. So that planning process started with our Urban Infill Advisory Committee. There were 29 members of that, and they included various stakeholders from the community, council district representatives, neighborhood association representatives. We also had 24 technical advisors that came in and assisted us where necessary, and this group convened for more than two years. So the public engagement part included 17 of those advisory committee meetings where the public was attending every time. We had four public events at our public library, radio and television interviews. We went to all of the district advisory board meetings and had those groups voted to adopt the plan, as well as, right now, five civic group presentations, including last night we had one, and we have some scheduled into the future as well. We had the Board of County Commissioners' presentation last week, presented to our city council, several planning commission meetings, and I think I showed you last week about the 300-plus responses to our visual preference survey, which was done online. And then we had social media communication throughout the entire time, and so that our advisory committee, the DABS, and the planning commission all approved this plan and recommended for adoption. So the next step, of course, is to start prioritizing the action steps that are necessary to implement this. And they include looking at our zoning code and trying, developing some practical regulations, possibly establishing a land bank, and then, of course, accessing all of those economic development programs that we already have, like Business Improvement District, Tax Increment Financing, and the like. And then, of course, we have our CIP as a tool for implementing the plan. So last week, you asked me about land banks, and I wanted to go in just a little more detail on that. Both cities and counties in the state of Kansas may establish, and subsequently, one day perhaps, dissolve land banks at their choosing. The governing bodies set the purpose, the powers, and the duties of the Board of Trustees, and they appoint that Board of Trustees. The land bank's purpose, and its very general purpose set out by the state, is to acquire, maintain, and dispose of abandoned, foreclosed, and distressed properties in an effort to stabilize neighborhoods and encourage their redevelopment. As I said, land banks are managed by a Board of Trustees, that those trustees are appointed by whatever the governing body decides. They should have knowledge of real estate, real estate development, taxes, finance, construction, and economic development. The trustees then adopt the mission and goals and policies of their board, and they receive no compensation. They have to maintain incredibly accurate records, including an inventory of any property they own. They submit an annual report to the governing body, or more frequently if requested. Land banks are a legal entity. They can be sued, and they can enter into contracts, and they can accept or refuse any property. I want to make it clear on that last one. A land bank is not a dumping ground for land that nobody knows what to do with. The Board of Trustees would then have a kind of a strategic mission, and they can accept land, or they can not accept it. The other things that the Board of Trustees need to do are develop their own bylaws, their policies, and procedures, and all of that is approved by the governing body that appointed them. So some examples of what land banks in Kansas do in terms of their policies, like in Hutchinson, they only acquire vacant land. They don't want a parcel of land with a building on it. They don't want the liability. Another community accepts land with only unoccupied buildings. Or another one accepts only residential land. That's their purpose. Or they may have a preference to support homeownership. They set their goals, they set their policies, and the state law allows them that kind of latitude to be very focused on what they want to accomplish. Something a land bank cannot do, which is just as important as what they do, they are able to do, there's no provision for eminent domain in the Kansas land bank law. They couldn't do it if they wanted to. And all properties are acquired by willing sellers, and oftentimes, some of the property they receive is actually donated. So communities throughout Kansas include Hutchinson, Overland Park, Lyons, Junction City, Greensburg, Wyandotte County, does it on a county-wide level, and then Olatha. So today, I'm asking you to adopt the findings of the planning commission and approve Wichita Places For People Plan as an amendment to our Community Investments Plan, and happy to stand for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Before I open it up to public, do we have any questions? I don't see any. I appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. I know Ann Fox, one of my favorite people who works for in our community.
Number. Oh, if I start naming numbers, you'll be as much trouble as your old daughter.
Thank you, Chairman Dennis. So you're going to give me a top 10 or a top 20 listing right there? Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. My name's Ann Fox. I live at 4949 North 151st Street West. I have served on the Urban Infill Committee, and if you stick with a committee that has 29 members for two years, you ought to have some credibility just for that. Our entire purpose was to identify ways that we could incentivize and increase the use of urban infill development. We have a wonderful established core area in our county, and the beautiful improvements in downtown now deserve to be supported by improvements to our residential areas, which in many places in the urban established area are places where there's a lot of blight, there's a lot of vacant properties, there are a lot of distressed properties because people can't manage them. And so how do you help people to engage in this area? And this proposal really provides lots of tools that should help us. I am also a nonprofit residential contractor through the Habitat for Humanity program, and I've been building houses in this area for myself eight years. The most recent five years, we've built 45 homes on vacant lots in ZIP Code 67214, which is the fourth lowest-income ZIP Code in the state of Kansas, so has some very desperate circumstances. And we've encountered a lot of challenges in that work. The biggest, one of the biggest challenges is acquiring properties for development because each is owned by a unique individual. Oftentimes, there's not clear title. And the land bank is a tool that has been used very successfully in other communities that we've learned of through the Habitat National Programs. Land banks, to me, are like pie. There's 100 different varieties. We have to define what the variety is that our community needs and that will serve our goal of urban infill development. But I think that can be very successfully done because we have really smart people in our community who are willing to participate in defining how we can use a land bank as a tool to fill in areas that are otherwise going to remain vacant. a tool to fill in areas that are otherwise going to remain vacant. The other tool that I think will be really important are those being suggested through some parallel zoning codes. The zoning codes and building codes that are used in new suburban developments are very different than those that we need in an area that's like the area I've been working was platted in 1904. It's got very small easements and setbacks, and these make it very difficult to abide by modern-day construction requirements. It's very expensive. We uncover rubble when we're digging footings. We have areas that have absolutely no stormwater systems. So we have, we need to use unique measures to try to cope with some of those challenges. It's very expensive. As a nonprofit, I have teams of volunteers that help acquire property. Market rate developers are going to have a really hard time helping us to rebuild our established central area without some tools and supports. The committee made it very clear that we have lots of unique neighborhoods, and they all have their own unique characteristics. And so I think the proposed plan will make it very easy for the Planning Commission to look at neighborhood by neighborhood, what meets the unique characteristics, and will maintain the unique characteristics of this area while allowing us to make use of established infrastructure and improve our city. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Ann? Commissioner Cruz.
Ann, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say congratulations for winning your Women in Business. That was amazing. I also just want to really commend you for the work that you're doing with Habitat for Humanity. If you have not had a chance to get in a bus with this woman and go and see what she is doing, you need to. Because all of the homes, you wouldn't even be able to tell they're a Habitat for Humanity home, the way that you have changed. I mean, this fact that you just told us that 67214 is the fourth lowest income ZIP in the state, I think that what you're doing there is really to be commended. And I encourage you guys, once again, get in a bus with her and go see, because it might want to make you volunteer. I mean, I know I'd like to.
You reminded me of something. It was the second lowest incomes ZIP Code in the state in 2011, so we've moved up. So that's exciting, too. And I think, one thing I failed to mention is that, you know, a cracked window leads to blight. The new houses we built, the amazing thing is the ripple effect, and we have landlords who are upgrading their properties around us, because they're seeing the benefit of investment. Cities given us some tax money to pave a street that was unpaved, et cetera, that are making a real difference. So the uplift is very palpable, and the citizens are feeling it.
Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. We appreciate it. I did have an opportunity to see some of the work that she did while I was on the MetLife Airplane Commission, and I appreciate the things you're doing for our community. Thank you. I didn't have anyone else that signed up on the public agenda, but I am going to open it up for public comments at this time. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Wes Gallion with the Builders Association. It's always a pleasure to follow Ann, because she does such great work in the community, has a passion for what she does, has a real caring heart in terms of what the needs of people are and how they can be met, and very innovative in her thinking. We've worked with Habitat for a number of years, and always appreciative of having the opportunity to do that. I happen to serve as the chairman of this large group of people. My psychiatrist says I will get better. But not soon. Just kidding. One thing about this group I want to tell you, and I want to thank them all publicly this morning, this was a very diverse group of people, but I think every one of them came to the table with some concerns, some very objective, some not so objective, but all had a passion and a real desire, I think, to take a look at what could be done, to do things better than we've had, than we've been doing them over the past years. Mary presented a very condensed analysis report on the work done by the Steering Committee. And I think the one thing that I would like you to know is that when we started out talking about this, everything was on the table. There was nothing going to be excluded. Anyone could have an opportunity to talk about anything on the agenda when we met and did. We learned a lot of things about different tools that could be used, the land bank being one of those. I think people were skeptical and kind of, well, what's that for? You hoard property, you displace people, what have you. After learning about that, when, by the time we got done working with Gould and Evans, looking at all the possibilities in terms of tools that could be used, parallel zoning code being done, it brought much more flexibility than we're allowed now to do things in the established central area, having a land bank, and providing other incentives that would be necessary to move the ball forward in a positive way, everybody seemed to be on board. Wasn't always the case when we started, but I think it kind of grew on them in terms of realizing, we can make this work. For the first time in many years, I saw a group come together and find common ground right away, and it made a huge difference in how they looked at things moving forward. So I'm here today to tell you, I think this is a great recommendation. I would ask your support and approval of it. As mentioned, it's an amendment to the comp plan. There is more work to do. We'll look at examining the establishment of a land bank, parallel zoning code, incentives, and other things. And I think if we continue to work together with a spirit of trying to do what's positive for the community, the community can be made better, and we'll all be better for it. So I would appreciate your support today.
Next, Wes. I don't see any questions for you today. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Please approach the podium. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Lonnie Barnes. I live at 2924 North Terrace here in Wichita, Kansas. I too want to kind of speak on. I'm a little confused, and maybe you guys can add some clarity to that in here. I think Mary's done an excellent job in here in presenting people in places and surveying, getting all that information out to what we would like to revitalize some of these neighborhoods. But I get a little confused here. Last month in here, so I came up, we talked about 21st and Oliver. We wanted to keep that residential, and then this whole square mile radius that those policy recommendations would cover. We also talked about, well, I don't think you talked about opportunities, that was a city, opportunity zones in here, and what they do. And I showed you this map and left you a copy of that. And so this area where I showed you in here again, were some of those areas that were left out. These are 21st, 17th, 13th, and some of those as well. But in your, you also have a copy out here showing that area that you're going to do, that you want to do, this is called the Neighborhood Revitalization Area and Related Boundaries. And so this area in here, this brown in here, that includes those areas. And so it kind of gets contradictory to me sometimes. We're trying to revitalize it, but we're taking away some of the tools that would infuse some of those things into it. So I guess I get a little confused on that. So maybe in our consideration and discussion of that, as you guys learn more about it, and these land banks, I think they're good in here, but if you don't, and with all Mary's efforts, if you don't educate the people who live in those areas in here about the land banks and the properties that they own, and the tools that are out there to help them in here, they're selling property off, or people are coming and buying it up and displacing some of those neighbors and those community people in here. They just don't understand what's available to them.
Very good. Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Morning. My name is James Barfield, 2131 North Edgemore. And I want to put a little different tack on this. I cannot support this the way it is formulated today. To me, they call it a land bank. I refer to it as a land grab. This, to me, is nothing more than a warmed-over version of the bills that have been presented to the state legislature for the last probably four years, and it has never passed. Why? Because in every case, it's been deemed to be unjust and not in consideration of private property rights. In 2016, one of the most conservative governors we've ever had in the state vetoed this bill, and I'll quote what he said. Governor Brownback expressed concern that the bill disproportionately affected the poor. Government should protect property rights and ensure the less advantaged are not denied the liberty to which every citizen is entitled. Governmental authority to take property from one private citizen and give it to another private citizen should be limited. But this bill would have the effect of expanding such authority without adequate safeguards. The potential for abuse of this statutory process cannot be ignored. This is a warmed-over version of what the governor vetoed. Once again, in 2018, the bill was presented to the state legislature. It never made it out of committee. Now, we all know, basically, who will be targeted by this program. 67214, 67219 will be the largest targets. I'm a lifelong citizen of Wichita. I've seen this happen before. What was missing from this, the 29 members of the advisory committee, there was only one person in there that was from the ZIP Codes I just mentioned. There's been no opportunity for the private sector, in particular, the community members, neighborhood associations, in these particular ZIP Codes, to be involved and have an opportunity to renovate and upgrade these properties. And I can tell you, I know many people that would love to have the opportunity to do that. Who better knows these areas than the people that live there? The people who worked and sleep there? These people have been excluded from this process. And for that reason, I urge you to take a look at a land bank in Lucas County, Ohio, which is the Toledo area. They have probably one of the most successful land banks in this country. And how they do it? They partnership with the community leaders, the community, neighborhood associations, and community members, and they make available to these people all of the resources to come in and uplift and upgrade and renovate these properties by these private neighborhoods, neighbors. This is not a part of this process. So for that reason, I urge you to either delay this process or to not approve it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Can we get some clarification on how many open meetings there were? How many opportunities community members did have?
The advisory committee met 17 times.
On their own? Like, was it an open meeting?
It was an open meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm only talking about open meetings.
And so how were those meetings publicized?
Well, through social media, and just how we post all meetings on the website.
Okay.
Yeah. And let's see here, we had open house-type meetings over at the library. We had that four times.
Which library?
Wichita Public Library. We initially met up at Evergreen Branch. This was prior to the new library branch being opened, but once it opened last summer, we started meeting there.
Did you ever meet at Attwater?
No. We did go to all of the libraries within the established central area with handout materials about all the meetings. And we did those both in English and Spanish. Then we had, let's see, I'm trying to remember. Then we did all of the DABs, District Advisory Board meetings. We presented at all of those. And then, like I said, also, we had some other kind of civic meetings where we would be invited to speak, like at maybe a neighborhood association or some other group that wanted to hear, had heard about it and wanted a presentation on it.
Okay. So that's, I mean, I just totaled that up. It's 27 opportunities? Okay.
Yeah.
So...
And I would add that we posted our meetings, the audio recordings of all the meetings were also put online.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this subject? Please approach the podium. State your name for the record. You have three minutes.
So I'm Clayton Pearson. Live in North Riverside, 1442 North Coolidge. I'm coming at a different perspective here in that I'm what I call a car light, bike commuter, where I leave the car home roughly one to four times a day. And it gives you a whole new perspective on how your city is built and the physical space. For me, I've had a steep learning curve in learning how to bike commute. Since then, what I figured out is that in the areas of Wichita built 1940 and early, I can pretty much go wherever I want to. Anything built after 1960 to about 1990, it's tough. 1990 and after, it's nearly impossible. Some of that, I would even say, is designed ground-up to keep me out as a bike commuter or pedestrian. It's only designed for cars. The area does have a multimodal transportation and streets policy, which does help. But part of the reason I'm for the Places for People is the multimodal policy is good for the streets and how I move in the streets, but it doesn't address the environment. And when I go from a 1940 area in a small-scale, high-density, compact environment, it's easy for me to get around. When you get into this low density, you know, your next-door neighbor is 80 yards away. I can't see my neighbor across the street. It makes it much more difficult for active transportation, for transit, for walking, for biking, or anything else other than driving. And that's important to me, because, you know, years back, I'd say my granddad went through about 10 or 15 years of depression he didn't need to go through. The reason he didn't is he lived in a city car-only. When he can no longer drive, his world closed in on him. I'm dealing with that now. Grandparents, I mean, I have a parent that's probably only going to be able to drive one to three years from now. I am looking at a place, her world will close in on her, or I got to take care of her with my driving, be her Uber. I, myself, don't want to live in that kind of city 20 years from now. Places for people, changing the environment, where it's possible to live with having transportation options, it amplifies and is complementary to the multimodal transportation in the streets. So, you know, there are risks. He is correct. There are ways that you can mess up this policy. Implementation is important, but I think it sets the groundwork for a lot of potential and minimize some of the problems we have with our current zoning and the street design.
Thanks, Sarah. Appreciate you being here. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak about this item? Please approach the podium. State your name for the record.
Jerry Warren, 607 North Doris, Wichita, Kansas. Lifelong resident of Sedgwick County. Built smaller homes in older neighborhoods for a long time with my father. That's kind of my background, slab-on-grade, over several years. Always looking for properties, opportunities of empty lots. Went through the tax sale process, have been through several processes trying to acquire land that way, and then better our neighborhood. My family basically grew up there several generations. We tried to stay close. I have a niece that has a medical condition that keeps us there close together, which we were always very appreciative of. One of the things that became fairly apparent to me, serving in the DAB Board, District Four, over time, was our neighborhoods in Wichita, as they aged, even though the Neighborhood Association was trying to work together, it was hard to get public buy-in and also get the neighborhood out in support. Any of you guys, obviously, all of you guys, serve your communities and understand that it's difficult to get community involvement from time to time. What I'm encouraged about this plan is, I think it actually, to James' point, actually offers more influence for the neighborhood to decide what goes in their area, how they want that to look, and how to reinvigorate that. We can all sit here and make policies all day long that we want to up here, but if it doesn't get enacted by the people and they don't come out and support it and voice their opinions, which, again, I think Lacy mentioned 26, 27 times, that we have, I guess a little bit of my frustration as a community leader in my neighborhood comes out. I want them to be out and be part of the environment, rather than coming up after the fact and saying, "We didn't try." I applaud the work that was put in. Thirty-some people spent a lot of their time, dedicated many hours of their time, to come through with the best possible plan amendment that they could come up with. A little bit back to me, it was my goal and my intention to start a construction company to build infill housing. Obviously, that was what I was good at, what I had done for several years. But it's almost impossible to accumulate land in a situation where you can produce on any kind of scale that would allow you any kind of profit with the current conditions. You know, there were some waves of TAP fees and those types of things, some tax abatements. We've tried several things over the years. Some things have worked, some haven't. But this truly is, and Ryan Net, he built a house over on Green that was in the parade this year. Wish all of you guys could have went and seen it. He took time out, took the risk, built something that fit into the neighborhood. And I applaud him very much, and he's got recognition for that, and he should. Again, if you listen to his story, he had to overcome several obstacles to do that. Anyway, long story short, my story is, I ended up in a small community out further in Sedgwick County, bought some other property, and have been able to develop that slowly. But it would be my goal, my dream, my hope, that at some point in time, our city, our county, would look at reinvigorating these neighborhoods. And just one more thing, and I'll quit. I had the privilege of spending a year with Habitat for Humanity, and I'm here to tell you, you can go outside of this city, you can go all over, and people will recognize that area of town, good, bad, indifferent. But what they've done and the commitment that they've put forth and the willingness to work with those people, myself included, with the neighbors out there, they're wonderful people in that area that want their neighborhood back, and they see it, and they work together every day with them. I applaud them. And if you have the time to drive through over there and look at that neighborhood and see what's come and see the pride of ownership, I encourage you to do that. And all we're asking for here is a possibility to come up with some plan. Doesn't have to be our plan, doesn't have to be their plan, some plan, to continue and grow on that. So that's all I would speak to.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Jerry. It's not really a question for you. It's just more of a question about, so has the Board of Trustees for these land banks already been set up, or will that be developed? So that will be developed? So what are the, how is that board going to be developed?
Should the city decide they want to establish a land bank. Once that decision is made, they then would appoint a Board of Trustees.
So the city would appoint a Board of Trustees?
Yeah, the governing body has a lot of control over the land bank. They receive reports on it. They know which properties are sold, they know which properties are purchased. They're heavily involved in monitoring what a land bank is doing.
Okay. And so in this supplemental information that you gave us on page 10, can we go back to that real fast?
Mm-hmm.
So this would be part of, the Board of Trustees would then develop a set of bylaws?
That's correct. Again, and then the governing body would have to approve them.
Okay. So just within the examples here, can we talk, just for example, if they do set to acquire residential land only? Can we talk about that for a sec? So what I understand, as far as someone who hasn't paid their taxes, they're given ample information about paying their taxes, getting them up to date before land is, like, we're not just going to come in and say, "Hey, your taxes, you haven't paid it, we're going to take it from you." Like, we're not...
Cannot... Cannot do that.
Right, so, I just want to make sure there's no misinformation about, you know, what this actually is. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, all purchases of land are done by a willing seller, whether it's the county who owns it, maybe the city owns it, or maybe an individual or someone, whether they can't find them and now it's languishing there.
Okay.
All right, but only, it's only done willingly. No one is ever forced to give up their property.
So, say someone wants to refurb and wants to rehab their property, but they're, they just aren't, they don't know how to do it, they don't have the finances, what sort of programs are available for those who want to stay in their home, but maybe their homes need assistance?
I would have to refer that to the Housing Department, what kind of programs they have. That would have nothing to do with a land bank.
Just as a general question, you know, we want to make sure that we have people who live in these areas, if they want to stay in their areas but need help, there is, there could be possibly maybe some, something out there that could help them figure out, you know, who to call to fix whatever needs to be fixed, as a general...
Correct. Well, first of all, there's always, there's tax abatement programs that might be in place that could help somebody afford to make some changes, but also, I think the federal government through Community Development Block Grant, and again, you asked the experts on that, they sometimes have home improvement-type monies available to qualified parties.
Okay, so, if someone is listening right now and they fall into this category, who would they call right now to get that assistance?
They'd call the Housing Department.
The Housing Department at the city?
Yeah.
Okay. So, just one last question. How will these, should this be adopted and the Board of Trustees is going to be formed, how will the public be informed? Will that be, will that fall on the city to then inform the public?
Yes, it would be a public process.
Okay.
Again, if the, if the plan is adopted, then we have to have the decision made, do we want to establish a land bank, yes or no?
Okay.
And then, from there, they'd appoint the Board of Trustees if the answer's yes.
Okay.
And then, from there, they'd start deciding what parameters, like these examples here, just what kind of land bank property are we interested in.
So, those interested in following this topic and have an invested interest in it should make sure to follow the city's website or contact the city.
That's right.
I'm sure that maybe we could help within our Communications Department, maybe help people understand this process, should it go forward. I just want people to be informed because even though there were 27 meetings, some people aren't on social media, some people don't follow things, so I just want to make sure that there is ample opportunity because we all get busy and not everybody knows when the meetings are. So, I think as a community, though, we have to take responsibility in making sure that we follow what's going on if we are interested, but then there are other, so, I just want to make sure that people are aware.
I mean, we're committed to that, too.
Can we, how can we ensure, though, that this Board of Trustees is diverse and meets these qualifications? I mean, that's one thing that I want to say, we want to make sure that, I know that this is a city thing, right? So, I can't tell my colleagues over there what to do, but I would encourage folks to put people on these boards that really represent the communities that are the most impacted. So, if I could just plug that for as far as diversity goes, I think that's important.
Right, point taken.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this subject before we bring it back to this board?
Mr. Chairman, can I make one?
Quickly.
One of the things I meant to emphasize, and I did not properly do that, is that working through this process, we, I think we came to a really good understanding that if this thing is going to be successful, there's a lot to deal with in order to move it forward. It has to be public-private partnerships put in place to do that. Nothing's going to be done in a vacuum, nothing's going to be done to a neighborhood, but in order to do something for a neighborhood, those people have to be engaged, and the others know that. So, I would see, and to Lacy's point, the people appointed to the Board of Trustees, if that's what it's ultimately called, a land bank, have to have the expertise to know how things work in order to affect the changes that need to be changed, to assemble land that needs to be assembled and made available so that a positive impact can be had. It's not a one-size-fits-all, it's unique to every part of town, but I think that's the objective that everyone wants to achieve, openness with everything that takes place.
Thank you, Wes. Once again, anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this subject? Not seeing no one, I want to bring it back to the board. Let me ask Mary a couple of questions real fast. There is no eminent domain involved in this process?
Absolutely not, they couldn't do it if they wanted to.
And the government is not going to run it, it's going to be a private organization that sets up the trustees on this side.
Yes, the land bank is a private entity, but it is responsible to whatever governing body set it up.
And the purpose isn't for gentrification and so forth, to take, establish neighborhoods and gentrify them?
No.
Very good.
All right.
Any other questions for staff before we bring it back to, for our discussion? Seeing nothing, thank you, Mary.
You bet.
All right, Commissioner, so, I would like to bring it back to the board now, at this point in time, for recommendations. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions, and as I get started, I'd like to just say, the comprehensive plan, if I understand correctly, is required by state law. We must have one as a county-wide zone, we have county-wide zoning, so I believe the comprehensive plan is required. And I know we approved this in 2016, and I think that the plan we updated in 2016 had been, had not been updated for like 20 years, I'm trying to remember the history of that, but I think that's about, that's about right.
That's about right.
And so, I know when we have county-wide zoning, we are required to do this, and I know, I did vote for that in 2016. In fact, as chairman, I brought that to the board, it had been languishing on the, below the line, if you will, wouldn't come up on the agenda for about half a year. We were ready to go forward, but it wasn't able to come up for a vote. But as chairman, I brought that up, and I did vote for that in 2016, so that's kind of my history there. It seems like there's been a lot of discussion about amending it already, which is kind of interesting to me. This is intended to be a long-term vision for the community, and it shouldn't have to be updated, you know, frequently. So, to me, this is interesting that it's up here for an amendment already, but let me just say, also say, I know this is very well-intended, I know that there's a lot of folks that are really passionate about this, a lot of great people on this board that have worked together for over two years, and I'm really impressed with the process that was followed. I think you've all done excellent work, I think that overall, it's been a very interesting read, and just for the record, I think this is about 350 pages of information for us to wade through, and I've tried to do my best to read through all that, but it's hard to find all the differences and changes in this very big document. And so, I also appreciate Habitat for Humanity, I think they do a tremendous job for this community. I have a couple of questions, however, and one of the questions I have is, what are the tools in place now that deals with the issues that this amendment might open up the door, if you will, to, we keep talking about the land bank, for example? What are the tools we have today that may already deal with some of the challenges in the community that, this seems to be a proposed solution, but what are the, what are the problems, and what are the tools today to deal with those issues as we sit today?
Well, as, if someone comes in and tries to do some work in the established central area, we have a zoning code that they can use, it's just cumbersome, it's onerous for this type of development. So, they can use it if they have a lot of patience and they're willing to spend the money that it takes to work through that. That is a tool that we have currently, it's just not a really great one. Other tools, though, of course, we have access to tax abatement and things like tax increment financing and all of those economic development tools that are handled out of the city manager's office.
In terms of a blighted property that may be delinquent in property taxes, it goes to a tax sale eventually, and I know that's one way to get the taxes paid up and get the title cleared and liens cleared off so that a new owner can invest in that or do whatever they feel is best for them as new property owner. Is that correct?
Yes, and certainly, there are properties that go through that process that aren't purchased. There's just too much involved for them. That is a languishing piece of property, and that is something that if it's maybe in the right place, would be appropriate for the land bank to pick it up.
I see, okay. Is the comprehensive plan amendment actually necessary to establish a land bank for the city of Wichita?
No.
It's not required?
Uh-uh.
Okay, I didn't think it was. Is there any type of timeline or rush for us to adopt this today? I mean, do we have some time to reflect on the changes and have future discussions? I mean, is there any urgency to adopt the changes today?
There is none.
There's not?
No.
Okay. Do we know how many cities in Sedgwick County or in Kansas have land banks? I think, I did some research, I believe Mulvane has one and Valley Center, I think, has one, I'm not sure if there's any others.
Well, we know of Hutchinson because it's been around for a while.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I'd like to, I'd like to know more how those are working in terms of, you know, what's, you know, what are the, what are the benefits of those land banks? How is it working well for those cities in light of Kansas law? Those are nearby neighbors, I'd like to have some data on that. And then, I am curious, where does the money come from for the land bank? If they make a purchase on a property, where does that money come from?
Well, to get it started, normally, there's some seed money provided by the governing body, and then that is normally paid back as they, as they start buying and eventually selling properties. Eventually, they become self-supporting.
So, the sale of the property eventually would pay for the future investment on other purchases?
That's correct.
It just starts to snowball, okay? Property that goes to tax sale, the taxes, any money that is received at the sale, do, number one, go back to the governing bodies as a delinquent tax collection, and then, in this case, I understand that if the purchase is made into a land bank, that the tax is abated?
That's correct.
Okay.
They clean up the title, they forgive the taxes, unless it's a, like a special tax, some sort of assessment, that remains with the property.
Okay. I wish I had an understanding exactly what that tax impact would be anticipated, I don't know if we have that data or not. I do appreciate the fact that it was 27 meetings and all of that. I would tell you, I watched the city council meeting, and one of the common comments we heard at the city council on June the 5th, I believe it was, was there's a lot of people who were very interested in this, that for whatever reason, did not have information that this was going on until a week or two ago, one of them said two months ago, one of them said two weeks ago. The lady that said two weeks ago was actually the president of the Wichita Independent Neighborhood Association, what's called Wichita Independent Neighborhoods. And I thought that was interesting that somehow, communication did not get to some of the people, I think, who have a very vested interest in this. I don't know how that happened, but I am sympathetic or empathetic to the fact that those folks feel like they've been left out. So, I don't mind slowing this down a little bit and giving people a chance to engage with us, if that helps. And then, I would say also, you know, back to what Mr. Barfield said, I would, I would agree with him that, you know, this has been very controversial in the state. One of the arguments against the bill that was passed and was vetoed by the governor was that it was, there was a concern about how those would be more aggressive for private property rights based on the issue of blight. Many of them, some of them, through very difficult, you know, very difficult life circumstances, they would feel more pressure from the government to perhaps hand over that property. And there was some concern that that would especially impact people with low income that have maybe more of those issues, and so, that was hotly debated in the state year after year after year, and even has been vetoed by the governor. And I know there's people on both left and right ends of the political spectrum that have supported and opposed that legislation, so it's interesting to me, this is really not a, you can't really characterize, I guess, who might be supportive of those bills or those ideas. I think you see people in all kinds of diversity that would be on both sides of that. One other thing is, I understand that we were assured when we had this presentation about a week ago, and by the way, this came to us, I believe, Tuesday last week, was the first time we saw this as commission. I'm not sure how much involvement the county's actually had in the board that developed this, but we were assured that any issues of, you know, I use the word eminent domain, but you understand, we're not, we're not taking property, there probably would be some type of a, an agreeable deal made with the property owner, but there was some concern about how that pressure might, might be perceived by those homeowners and the timeline and the, you know, the pressure that the government might add to someone to make a sale. And I guess I would just wonder why, if Wichita wants to go down this path, why they would not just develop their strategy and the rules and policy before we amend this today? I would love to see the comprehensive plan agree with what we actually do, I think that should match, but since we're not sure if they want to do it or not, we don't know what the details would be, why don't we go and answer those questions first and get some of those, Commissioner Cruz, I think is right, that I think it would be nice to see what the, what the plan would be and how they would handle the diversity, how they would handle respecting private property rights before we'd actually have to amend the comprehensive plan to match whatever it is that they choose to want to do in the future. And I'm concerned that maybe by doing this today, we're getting the cart before the horse because we don't have another vote on this. After today, this is our final vote, of course, I understand. I am, so I am concerned about people with, you know, low income that are having problems with their property, feeling, you know, maybe a heightened pressure from the government to do something with that, whereas right now, we tend to lean on other tools like the tax sale, for example, so. Anyway, I have some concerns about it, I suspect this will pass, and I've done my best to read all the information, although 400 pages is quite a lot, and so, with that, I'll just sit back and listen to the discussion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. A couple of quick points before we decide what we're going to do. You all know that I served on the MAPC for nine years, and during that point, period of time, Commissioner Howell is correct, that thing was about 15, 20 years out of date for most of the time that I served on it. And every time that we came to a decision and it said, "Does this follow the comprehensive plan?", we'd all just kind of shrug and say, "Well, the comprehensive plan's out of date, so yeah, I guess it does." So, as a result, when I was on the Advanced Plans Committee, we rewrote the comprehensive plan, and that's what you see here. And one thing I want to make sure that you understand, I want to respectfully disagree with Commissioner Howell, it is a living document. That was the plan. It's not something that we write and put on the shelf, it's a document that we need to change periodically as things change in our community. So, that is the entire purpose behind the comprehensive plan. It's a very general plan, it doesn't give specifics, it's not designed to give specifics on how that we're going to do something. We do that through trying to get zoning regulations and so forth that go in commensurate with it. So, I believe, I was a little concerned last Tuesday when we got briefed on this because no one had told us about it before, and the one area that I was concerned with are the land banks and how that they're going to be controlled, and I wanted to make sure that government wasn't controlling this and that we weren't trying to gentrify a neighborhood, that we weren't taking land away from people to build nice new homes and areas for people, and we were not going to harm poor people that lived in certain neighborhoods. So, these were the concerns since last Tuesday when I expressed those concerns. I've talked to a number of people to make sure that the things that I was concerned about were not going to occur in these neighborhoods, and I have been assured that all of my concerns have been laid, so I feel very comfortable with pressing forward with this. So, those are the comments I have. Commissioner Meister has a couple of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just to clarify, Mary, thank you. This Places for People Amendment is to the, it's been called the Comp Plan a lot, but it's really the Community Investment Plan that was adopted in 2015?
15 and 16.
2016.
Yeah.
And did the city of Wichita already pass this, this amendment?
This amendment they have, yes.
Right. And the amendment is specific to that boundary?
That's correct, the established central area.
So, the amendment we're to consider today is not anywhere except in that circle?
That's correct.
It's all in the city of Wichita property?
Yes.
And they passed it?
They did.
And the reason we need to consider it is because the Community Investment Plan that was passed a few years ago was a joint Wichita and county document.
That's exactly right, and so, all amendments to that plan will come forward to this body, whether it includes areas outside the city limits.
Okay. So, if it had to do with unincorporated county properties, it'd be maybe a little more attentive to us to consider what we, what we would or would not consider.
Right.
So, and of the 350 or 400 pages of this amendment, there is obviously some concern about the so-called land bank issue, but I think Commissioner, Chairman David Dennis expressed a comfort zone, which is, it's a crazy thing, and I'm so glad that it's, when I talk to the mayor and city manager and... when I talk to the mayor and city manager and others, land bank is just part of a consideration. They don't even know if they want to do that or not.
That's right.
And knowing the makeup of how appointments would go and everything else, I, I would think that they would consider expertise as well as residents affected and blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
Okay. Then lastly, I, I am, I am for moving this forward as well, especially since the city passed it, it's in the city boundaries. But I would comment that back in, back in 2015, when the original Community Investment Plan was passed, or 2016, when it was finally passed, we were, I was at the city at the time, and we received a revision from, from the county commission of which Commissioner Howell, you were a part of. And on the very first page was redlined, the very first page, it says you want to do, why this plan? Again, it's a plan, but redlined was three items, and one was promoting economic growth and job creation. Second one was advancing community quality of life and safety, and the third was creating a community that will attract and retain future generations. That was deleted, and it came over to the city, and then there was a lot of dialogue and end up, we came up with, with the plan a few months later, but Commissioner Howell did approve later on. But, so there is a feeling sometimes that planning is not, not a, not a good tool. I, I tend to think that it is a tool, and especially since it can be adjusted. And I think when you have things like e-scooters that won around in 2015, and even bike share and everything else won't even around. And so I think adjusting a plan every so often, whenever it's needed, is, is responsible government, to be honest, from my perspective. So I'll be supportive in moving forward with this.
Thank you. And since I don't have any more lights on, an own final comment, and I want to echo Commissioner Meisner's comments that this is a Wichita issue, we're only involved in it because it's a comprehensive plan that is a joint plan for Wichita and Sedgwick County. So even though we have a few concerns, I, I've been very satisfied with the answers on that. I believe Wichita will handle it well. So at this time, I'd like to move that we adopt findings of Metropolitan Planning Commission, approve the comprehensive amendment, authorize Chairman to sign the resolution, and authorize the resolution to be published. Do I have a second? Second? I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do want to show, again, thankfulness and respect and appreciation to all of those involved in the process. I know it's a very long process, and thank you, I think you did a really good job, actually. And although I have some concerns, and I, I have been, as, as the chairman just said, I have some, I have some concerns, but those concerns have been answered with, you know, with clarity that there's intent to do this in a way that respects private property rights. And to the extent this is not our governing, our governance, our governance really has no authority over what Wichita would do anyway, this is a Wichita issue. I will go ahead and vote for this today. I have some concerns, but I, obviously, I've been, I think I've been heard, so I appreciate the dialogue and discussion. I just wanted to end this with, on a high note that says, I do appreciate all of the great work that everyone's done, and I know that you have heard what I've said. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you all for your patience in this, we appreciate it very much. We have a large agenda still ahead of us right now. I know that Commissioner Howell asked for us to add something, but we do need to cover item Juliet next, and then we can go to off agenda. So Madam Clerk, call item Juliet.
Item J, concare support for an employee currently serving overseas. Good morning.
Good morning, Chris.
I am here this morning to introduce you to one of the county's best and brightest employees, Anid Claudio. Anid has worked for the county since 2014. She started as a crisis case manager, answering the crisis hotline. She advanced to a clinician role at the Community Crisis Center, and then became a team lead, supervising other phone staff. During that time, she also worked hard to obtain her clinical social work license. Not only is Anid a great employee, she's, you know, she is, what makes her a great employee? She's dependable, hardworking, and honorable. And she's worked hard to serve our community members that are experiencing mental health crises. She's also bilingual and has volunteered to provide presentations to our Spanish-speaking community members related to suicide prevention and depression education. Here is Anid, receiving a care package that her team at the Community Crisis Center sent her last month. But this is not really about what we did for her, but what she's doing for us. Let me introduce you again to Sergeant First Class E.7, Chief Public Affairs Non-Commissioned Officer Anid Claudio. Anid was deployed to Kuwait on a special mission on January 3rd, 2019, and will be there for a year. Anid and her Army Reserve teammates are working hard to preserve what we often take for granted. Anid is not the only one making this sacrifice. Her family is also making the sacrifice, worrying about her daily and making sure the home front is healthy and happy for Anid's three-year-old son, Killian. Anid's parents, Louis and Diana Claudio, are here with us today. Anid got her servant's heart from her parents, who are both retired Medical Service Corps Army officers. Anid's husband, Matt Killian, is also here with their three-year-old son, Killian. Matt and Killian are sacrificing each day by sharing their wife and mother with Army Reserves. Please join me in thanking this entire family and our good friend, Anid Claudio, who's watching, for her bravery and dedication to our community and our country.
Would the family like to come forward?
I have been watching Killian this whole, this whole time, and I cannot say how wonderful and quiet and just awesome he has been. Hi, Killian.
He's been amazing.
He has. Hi.
Very amazing.
What a good kid.
Oh, I, sorry, that was what I had to say.
Well, we sincerely appreciate you being here today. I personally know what sacrifices that the family goes through so that our soldiers, sailors, airmen, and women can serve their country. And we sincerely appreciate their service, but we do care truly about the families. I left my family at home a lot of times in the 29 years that I served in the military. So I understand, I, I can't tell you what the family goes through, because I was the one that was gone. But I, I know what my wife had to take care of while I was gone, and I know what you all are doing, taking care of, and I appreciate, appreciate so much the service to our country and your service to our country. And Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I have to echo your, your comments. We love the military folks in this community and their families that support them. I also want to say thank you for sharing, Anid, am I saying that right?
Anid.
Anid. Thank you so much. Well, thank you for sharing her with, with Kuwait, and it's so important that she serves the way she is, and, and I'm so glad she worked for Sedgwick County. I'm extremely proud of, of her and of you as her family. And I know it's an extremely challenging and tough time right now to, to live without each other, but we look forward to her, to her return, and I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate all you're doing, the sacrifice for our community and our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you all like to say anything at all?
Just thank you for the recognition. It was a nice surprise, unexpected.
Well, I apologize you had to stay here so long. I, I know we have a long subject.
I think Killian deserves the award for patience.
Thank you. Anything else, Chris?
No, thank you very much. Thank you, Anid.
And later on our agenda this morning, we're going to do something else for our military men and women. And as soon as we get to it, we've got a couple of other things before we get to it, but we do appreciate the service, and that's why we're doing this, and we've got one more thing on our agenda later on. So what, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Howell at this time?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, as I said earlier, I have an off agenda item I'd like to raise, and so with that, I'd like, and it has to do with the issue of potentially supporting dewatering for the community of Hayesville and Derby in Mulvane. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to insert an off agenda item at this time.
Thank you. We have a second to assert an off agenda item. In a second, any discussion? The only discussion I have is that we do have some public meetings, public hearings that we have to have. We're going to lose Commissioner O'Donnell at noon today, so we need to take a look at what we're discussing and make sure that we move through these things so that we can cover everything that we have to cover today. But we have a motion and a second for an off agenda item. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'll try to be quick on my comments here, but we have had a record amount of rainfall in, in the month of May, and ongoing, even last night, we had areas of the community that had over four inches of rain. And there's a community down south that is between the city of Derby and the city of Mulvane, that is having a very difficult time with groundwater. And this is not a new problem, it's gone on especially since 2007, when we have heavy rainfall, the water table comes up so high that it actually is above their, the bottom of their basement in their home. And a lot of these homes, the water has seeped through the foundation into their basement and their standing water. And in the years past, when Commissioner Norton was here, numerous times, they did turn on the Derby water wells, there was coordination between the county and the city of Derby and the state to, to turn those water wells on, just a couple of those. They would add some relief to the, to those homeowners that were struggling with groundwater that's seeping in, I should say, yeah, water table that was seeping into their basements. And it, it did have reasonably good success in that. We did commission a study in 2016 that we paid for, and that study had, I think, a lot of information that was very useful. But I'd like to add to that and simply say, I actually have a data right in front of me that talks about these water wells going back to 1971, and the level, they, they measure the water table, how far it is below the ground. And for water wells number 10 and 11, you can look at any of these really, but water wells 10 and 11 are consistently around the mid-teens, as high as maybe 20 feet, down to, I think the lowest I see on here anywhere is about 11 feet. But most of the time, it settles, you know, about the mid-teens, 17, 18, 19 feet of, of depth between the ground and the water table. The moment they turned off the wells there in 2007, that water table went up to five feet, five feet below the ground. And of course, we know basements are typically around eight feet, let's just say. So that creates a differential pressure, that water seeps right up into these, in these basements. When we have a drought season, that water table will naturally go down, and with that, the problem kind of goes away. So between 2016 and 2019, they did not seem to have much of a problem. In 2016, as previous speaker earlier today mentioned, they did have a problem then. And I think if you go back to 2007, you'll find about six or so times that, that this type of thing has happened. And the county has been good to try to be empathetic to the issue and help these homeowners at their request to do what's called dewatering. Last time we did this, the county spent four months back in September of 2016, it cost the county taxpayers 21, a little more than $21,000. The average was $5,435 per month. They did pump 241 million, almost 242 million gallons of water. And this is high-quality water that's, it's not treated, but it is considered potable water, you could drink it. And Derby used this water for many years for the municipal water supply, but in 2007, the city of Derby chose to contract with Wichita, they installed a very expensive municipal water line from, from the city of Wichita, which of course gets, gets its water from north, north of Wichita, some, some wells up that way, as well as, of course, the Chiny Reservoir. And of course, we've also talked about in the past, you know, some concern about long-term water supply, and it sounds like Derby may be having some, some, some discussions about potentially using some of the well water that's out towards Hayesville once again. And of course, that may be a long-term discussion, whether they choose to do that or not, we don't know. That may be five years out, even if that does go that direction. Well, with that, I, I guess we, my, my concern is, I don't think the county has adequately communicated with this, with the people impacted by this, and I would like to more effectively communicate with those folks about what our intention is in terms of being a, a solution to this problem, in terms of long-term solution. I don't think we are a long-term solution. I think they need to find a long-term, long-term solution. But to the extent we have not communicated, and to the extent these are truly victims, these are folks that bought their homes not knowing this was a problem, and these are houses that were permitted by the county to install basements, of course, back, going back many, many years, it was never a problem until the government, again, different jurisdictions, both the, the reason Derby moved away from the wells is because the state water office limited how much water they could pull from those wells. And the city of Derby had grown to the point where they needed a larger water supply, so they moved their entire water needs over to the city of Wichita. So that's government. Of course, the city of Derby made a choice, that's their sovereign right as a home, as a city with home rule. They did that, they did that just fine, that was, that was their choice to make. And of course, we, as a county, have permitted and approved the building plans of these homes a long time ago. And so I see that really, government has, hey, has had decisions we have made all around this that have directly impacted these particular homeowners. Unlike other homeowners, maybe in other parts of the city that have cracks in their foundation and have waterproofing that perhaps has failed, water table has gone up, and they're struggling with water in their basements, I'm, I'm empathetic to that as well. We obviously can't fix all the problems everywhere, but this particular thing down south is a result of the permitting of installing basements in high-water area, having the wells shut off that had been there for decades, the limit of gallonage that's been allowed by the state for the city of Derby to help to make this decision. And so a combination of government decisions has, has left these, these homeowners in a very difficult position. So I, I guess I would like to see us, I guess, maybe a final time, turn these wells on for two months, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, we would, in fact, turn on these Derby water wells, well number 10 and 11, coordinate with the city of Derby and the state to turn these wells on for 60 days.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner O'Donnell? Do you have anything?
I, I agree with Commissioner Howell that this probably does need to be the final time. It's, it is an issue that is extremely problematic for that area, but there's a lot of other factors, and, and I don't believe that it's the county's fault that there's flooding down there. There are a lot of factors, but I don't believe that the county is responsible for the flooding problems down there. But I am sympathetic as well to that neighborhood and want to help them, so I will, I will support that.
Thank you. Commissioner Meisner?
I have a question. Who owns these wells? Can anybody address that? 10 and 11, whatever you're calling them. So the city of Derby owns these wells, and your motion is for us to tell Derby to turn them on?
No, to, to enter into negotiations and, and work with the city of Derby and the state to coordinate, as we have about five times in the past, to turn these two wells on for 60 days.
All right. Thank you for the, five times in the past. I'm just asking, what, I'm trying to clarify your motion. It's for, maybe, maybe you're going to have to restate it, because, and you said the final time, both of you have said the final time. Would the final time be part of the motion? The county will never turn those on again?
Let me clarify my motion. I think we need to more effectively communicate with people who are impacted by this issue.
Is your motion for us to effectively communicate with people?
Yes, it is.
That's a separate motion, for us to effectively communicate with citizens?
No, it's all one motion. Let me state my motion, please. Will that be all right?
Sure.
Would be to us effectively communicate with those homeowners that are impacted by this problem. I think a letter through the mail would be the appropriate way to do that. And it's a fairly large area, so we ought, we ought to send a letter, let them know what we're doing and that this is our position, this is not a long-term solution. And secondly...
What, what is our position that you're sending a letter to? What's the letter going to say?
That we are in the process of turning these wells on for 60 days by coordinating with the city of Derby and with the state of Kansas. And by turning these wells on for 60 days, this will be our last hurrah, if you will, I don't know how to say it better, but it's going to be our last effort to help these homeowners by using this method. And in the future, they're going to be, they're going to be, it's going to be necessary to find solutions that are either community solutions or personal property solutions. In either case, it's going to be on them, and they should, they should not look to In either case, it's going to be on them, and they should not look to the county to do this again.
Respectfully, you're right. That's a very long motion.
Again, I don't have the wording in front of me, Commissioner Meitzner. If I had known you were going to ask that question, I would have been glad to do that. But I think that my intent, my intent is clear, that we need to communicate effectively with these folks and let them know this is not going to be a long-term solution to a future groundwater seeping into their basements. This is the final time.
Commissioners Mike Repin and our county councilor, it might be simpler and might accomplish the same thing, just to simplify the motion to turn on the wells for 60 days, and then we can bring back any other letters or items like that before the board to send out. But I think that's the intent of your, of what you wanted to do today, Commissioner.
Certainly. I would accept your recommendation, let's just simplify this and turn the wells on for 60 days would be my motion. Then it would be my intent that we'll continue the discussion to send out a letter. We can debate the exact wording of that letter, but it's my intention to let these folks know what the county's position is, and I guess my position is, I think we ought to not continue doing this each time this happens.
And I think we can address those issues at a later time.
Okay. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to amend my motion to simply say that we would like to turn on these water wells, 10 and 11, coordinating with the city of Derby and the state to turn on these two water wells, number 10 and 11, for 60 days.
Second. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
So can we get these, I'd like to have the visual put back on the screen of the water wells.
I'm looking at it, it's on the desktop.
And also, while she's doing that, say that we did vote to have these wells turned back on today. Susan, can you address the timeframe in which it would take to get approval of these?
We have to get approval from the state division of water resources, and that could take up to a month.
Okay, so in the past, I believe, excuse me, I was informed that, I think it was, they were turned on in as quickly as seven days, a week? What was the past? I just want to make sure we have all the information.
As Susan mentioned, when we petitioned the state, it could take up to 30 days. I think historically, they have been faster than that because they understand that the county's asking, so.
My understanding, the last time was just over two weeks.
Okay, so 14 days before anybody could really get any relief?
And then, we're pulling it up right now. The Kona depression, yes, as a well is pumping, as I showed you yesterday, it draws down the water level in the wells, so obviously if the well's pumping, like, go back one. The bottom part of this diagram shows that the water table's drawn down from the well pumping. It's drawn down the most near that well, and you have less effect the further out you go. So the map you're referring to... Book it there. It's this one.
Yep.
The two wells are red dots there that are the Derby wells. The yellow dots are homes near the area. The circles are the effect of the Kona depression. The closer you are, the light blue circle is the water table would be drawn down four feet in 60 days' time. The red circle is three feet in 60 days' time. So you see this one house right across from the south well, so it would have the most effect. As you move further out, it's less effect, and the blue circle is two-foot line in 60 days, and the green is less than a foot in 60 days, so...
So because it's kind of hard to read, that's 95th and Hillside?
That's correct.
Okay, and so you have, what is that, Bluff? And I'm just trying to get my wits around me. Okay.
Bluff on the east, yeah. Hydrolic over on the left side of the slide.
Okay.
So the study was done by Groundwater Associates. The county paid for that study, and they looked at the type of soil, the transmissivity of the groundwater through the area, which relies on the permeability of the soil, to determine the effect. Basically, the limit is half a mile on what the wells will affect.
Okay.
So there's 11 homes within that one-foot circle. The closest homes would have the most effect, but it takes up to 60 days for these numbers.
Mm-hmm. So an additional rain would kind of, I mean, if we have more rain...
That counters the advantage you're getting from pumping, depending on, like the rain that we had last night.
Okay. The other thing I really kind of want to talk about is, can you go back to the slide that talks about how many gallons of water is pumped out?
This one?
Yes.
The last time we did this, end of 2016, beginning of 2017, each, the state division of water resources gave us a permit to pump 700 gallons per minute per well. So that's 1,400 gallons a minute from this area, which is 84,000 gallons an hour, over 2 million gallons a day, 60,480,000 gallons a month. And since we did it for four months, that's 241,920,000 gallons of water that was pumped directly into the Ark River.
And that's good, clean water that we're pumping into the Arkansas River that we're sending down south for someone else to deal with.
And when you say to deal with, that could be cities downstream that are pumping the water out, or people who are being flooded by the river already, or were adding to that water.
Okay. So, gosh, I hate this. You know, I don't know what has happened to the other commissioners in the past with their basements, but my basement flooded. I had to rip up all of my sheet rock. I had standing water in my basement for a little over two weeks. So I feel, I feel for you. I really do. My daughter's basement, my daughter's room was downstairs. I mean, my whole house is in disarray. I just found out yesterday that I think my air conditioner went out, because, I mean, you know, it's like, when it rains, it pours, right? So I really feel for this situation. My one concern, and forgive me for going back and forth for these slides, is can we go back to the wells with the circles again?
Sure. There you go.
So this is 11 homes that will be impacted by this?
That's correct.
Yeah? Okay.
And as I said earlier, the closer you are to the wells, the better the impact. The further away you are, the less you'll have an impact. So even, six of those wells are between the two and one-foot downdraw in 60 days.
Is your house in this area?
My house is very close. I am within the blue circle, I believe, without looking closer. I would also like to add that...
You'll have to go to the mic, because they can't hear you.
If you were to speak to anybody in this area that was east of the Turnpike, west of the river, south of the big ditch, all the way down to, eh, it gets a little hazy, probably down around 119, if you would speak to any of the homeowners, every last one of them will tell you they noticed the difference. We notice the difference when the irrigation goes on. We notice the difference when the Derby wells go on. I understand this report, I've read it, but I'm here to tell you that we are all pumping good water out. And if Derby doesn't do it, we're still doing it. We're wasting the water, we're pumping it into the ditches, we're dumping it in our backyards, we're trying to get it out to the river. So even if Derby isn't doing it, we're doing it. If we have to take more responsibility, I think as homeowners, we understand what Mr. Howell is trying to say, and we will do that, but you will see us pump more and more and more to protect our property values. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Anything else? Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Oh, I was just doing that due to a substitute motion, but Jim got the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Meitzner? Okay, I'm troubled back with the definition of, has the city of Derby, have the residents asked the city, since, can the city of Derby turn these on by themselves, or is this a county rule? Since the city owns, Derby owns the wells?
The city of Derby would have to get permission from the division of water resources to turn the wells back on. The point is, who's paying for it? And that's what we've been doing, is the county's been paying for the electricity. That number you saw was just the $5,400 average a month to pump the wells. And Derby has said if we do it again, they would also charge us for the labor of their people going out there and turning them on and monitoring it.
So Derby would apply, and it'd be up to 30 days, but maybe it'd be sooner?
Yeah.
Is there a cost? So then Derby will pass that cost to us for...
That's correct.
And then Derby will pass that cost to turn on, to physically, for the labor to turn them on?
That's correct.
So it's something more than four or five grand a month based on...
Depending on how long we're running it.
Current electric rates that are not 2016 rates?
Right, and I'm sure the rates have gone up since then.
Yeah. You think so? Okay.
Mine has.
And then, all right, so there's, so I guess if we pass this, we send a piece of paper or a phone call to Derby to say, hey, would you start the process? County councilor?
We call them and talk to the city manager, and she would have to get approval from the city council.
She's got to get, so it's got to get on their agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, I'm really troubled with this process that we're telling the city what to do, but that's okay. I guess it's been done before. Also, I hear the simplified amendment, but I've heard also from the people that are the sponsor, and the motion and the second said for the final time. Can the final time be included as part of the motion?
Commissioners, a practical matter, this motion wouldn't bind this board for future action anyway. I mean, I think it's on the record what the feeling of some of the commissioners are, but this board could change its mind in a year and decide to do it again anyway, so saying...
You know what? That's a good, that's a good point. You're right. So it's non-binding for the future. Well, something like this makes it easier. We've got a budget process coming up with various wish lists on other things that are outside, maybe, or in addition to the norm of running the county business. So the other departments that are more than these 11 residents, this will make it easier for me to make decisions on the upcoming budget to the tune of whatever the final number is going to be. Assuming if we only do it 60 days, then so be it, but all the, it's really a 90-day process plus invoices, so, but it'll sure make it easier on the additional budget requests, for sure, and we'll just have to explain to boards and whatever that, hey, we chose to, if we pass it, we chose to go this way. Be my comment. Be easier for me, at least. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Okay, I just have one clarifying question. So whose responsibility is it to turn on the wells? I guess I missed that.
We would request it of Derby. We'd have to work with them to get the division of water resources approval to do it. And then Derby personnel go out and turn on the wells, it's their wells, and to monitor it, make sure there aren't any problems, and then to turn them off again. So it's their staff doing it, since it's their wells.
So have we discussed this with Derby outside of this? I mean, could I make a substitute motion that we table this until we speak with those city leaders to have a conversation before we, I mean, it seems like we would want to work together before just enforcing something on another governmental body. Am I out of my realm?
No, you're not out of your realm. David Spears, Director of Public Works, I've talked to Kathy Sexton at least three times about this, and also in the past. So we don't know for sure that they will turn, they own the wells, it's their wells. We don't know that they're going to turn them on. We don't know. We don't know that. She, like Susan said, she'll have to go to her board and see if they want to do it, but she told me if they do it this time, it's not only going to be electricity, it'll be the labor, which is not just to turn them on, it's to go out there, check on them, make sure they're working, this, that, and the other.
So we...
Do we know if they work?
They worked last time, but we don't know if they'll work this time.
Would we be responsible for replacement and repair if...
Well, I guess that would be discussed if they broke down. We'd have to discuss that with Derby and just seeing what the cost would be.
Would you bring that back to us if that happened? If they said, hey, one of these is out?
Yes.
Or are we obligating ourselves to say we're going to do it?
No, I don't think we're obliging. If it breaks down, we would have a, we would have a time period to figure out who's going to pay for it, if anybody.
If we do get this approved, and it takes 30 days to get it approved by the state, then if by some act of God, all the water is gone, can we change our minds?
Yes, and just not turn them on.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The answer to the question really is that the state has the right to say yes or no. They don't have to say yes. And Derby, of course, has the right to say yes or no. They don't have to say yes. We're not forcing anybody to do anything. We're requesting or asking them to help, and we're offering to pay for the cost that it would cost them to do this. We're not handing over money, that's not part of this. We're simply asking them to do this and saying we're willing to pay for the cost of what it costs them. Just a point of reference, we talk about, you know, 240 million gallons is a lot of water. I agree. That was over several months of pumping.
Four months.
Four months. When Cheney was letting water over its spillway, we were dropping 108 million gallons per hour. So in two hours at Cheney, we would have basically covered about the same amount of water that we did in four months out of these wells. And that, you know, you've got to keep things in perspective. It sounds like a lot of water, and it is a lot of water. I'm not going to say it's not. But how much water flows down the Arkansas River on high-water stage? I mean, we don't, I don't know the answer to that question. It's got to be massive amounts of water. And so we're talking about, you know, adding 84,000 gallons per hour to the Arkansas River. It's technically insignificant, really. You can think about how much water is flowing down the river at that point.
I'd like to point out that surface water takes more treatment than groundwater because of potential of bacteria and pollutants in the surface water. Wichita does get their drinking water from a combination of Cheney Lake, which is a dam across the Nineska River, and groundwater to the north in the Equus beds, northern Central County and Harvey Counties where the wells are located, and they mix those in the water treatment plant. Used to be 50/50 for those, and it's varied over time, as when there's a drought and the surface water's down in Cheney, they'd get more from the groundwater.
And I appreciate that. In other words, the water from the Aquifer has a higher value because it's more usable, as is, versus surface water that would require...
It takes less treatment.
I understand that totally. I was just trying to get to the issue of the quantity of water and how this might impact people downstream of us by doing this. And that's really the point of my comment, but, so again, 84,000 gallons per hour is what we're talking about potentially if we do these two wells. And Cheney, we were letting out 30,000 gallons per second. And that's just Cheney. We did the same thing in Altorado, and we did, you know, there's, these large reservoirs in the month of May, we let enormous amounts of water downstream. What you did by... Go ahead.
That's the problem what we're seeing right now with this area and the groundwater, and the water table rise, the record rainfalls we've been having.
Anyway, I just, and in terms of this impacting other things on the budget, you know, every commissioner can vote however they feel they need to vote on any issue, but to connect this issue with other items in the budget, it's, I don't know that that's necessary to do that, but certainly every commissioner can do what they want. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
All right. No, I thank everybody for their time and interest in this issue, and, you know, I think the policy like Mr. Repin brought up, we'll have to address that later if this passes, so I'm open to that. That's all I wanted to say.
I'm going to make just a couple more comments. We do have a large meeting today. We're on item between Juliette and Kilo, and we've got to go to Alpha Delta yet today, and we're losing a commissioner here shortly, but, so I think we need to move forward a little bit. But just a couple quick comments. We've got flooding right now across the entire county. It's not isolated to this small area. We have residents all the way across the county that are hurting, but we're going to pick out 11 residents that we're talking about trying to help. We're going to spend thousands of dollars, and I understand what Commissioner Howell
Howell said, that he doesn't believe that this impacts other things, but it comes out of our budget, so certainly we have to trade off other things. If we spend thousands of dollars to do this, we're not going to spend thousands of dollars someplace else. We have eleven homes that are impacted on this. We're going to dump, in the past, we dumped a quarter of a billion gallons of drinkable water of Equus bed, not Equus bed, of Aquifer, I'll get the right term, Aquifer water into the river. That's different than what being pumped out of basements with sump pumps, because that's not Aquifer water. That's almost like groundwater. It's shallow groundwater. I don't believe that it is Sedgwick County overall taxpayers' responsibility to worry about this. I know it's a very big concern to the homeowners down there, but if we're starting, if this is going to be the policy we set, I've got half the county in my district, four hundred and fifty square miles of Sedgwick County is in my district, so just be prepared because we're coming full bore then. We might as well forget com care, we might as well forget EMS, we might as well forget everything else, because we're going to be spending some money on flood control. So you better be prepared. So I will not be voting for this. Oh, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
You voted aye? No. Next item, please.
Item K, AAA Kansas AAA Club Alliance 2018 Traffic Safety Award to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office.
Colonel Powell, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to appear. My name's Sean Stewart. I'm with AAA Kansas, and it's a pleasure to be back to present the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office with the AAA Kansas Community Traffic Safety Award, this for the 2018 review period. I'd like to first recognize Mr. Troy Wells, Law Enforcement Liaison with the Kansas Department of Transportation. Troy's in the back there. Troy works very closely with law enforcement agencies around the state to help identify deserving ones and get them to apply for this award. This marks the sixth consecutive year that Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office has qualified for the AAA Traffic Safety Award. They're being recognized for a variety of programs and initiatives, including supporting the award-winning Kansas Teen Seatbelt Safety Usage Program called SAFE, having a department policy requiring all employees wear seatbelts, employing statistical data to determine areas of higher traffic offenses and crime, and to work to reduce those issues in identified areas, engaging in enforcement efforts combating impaired driving and unbuckled vehicle occupants, and enforcing laws against drivers failing to stop at school bus stop signs. Proof of the Sheriff's Office' great work are shown in some of the statistics for the county provided by KDOT. Teen seatbelt use is up from eighty-six percent to ninety-two percent in the last five years. Passenger, child passenger restraint use is up from eighty-six percent to ninety-one percent over that period. Teen crashes, alcohol-related crashes, vehicle crash injuries, and vehicle crash fatalities all fell in the most recent year of statistics. Only ten other sheriff's departments in Kansas qualified for this AAA award for 2018. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you as Commissioners for your support of the Sheriff's Office and providing them the resources they need to do this great work. So finally, it's a pleasure to present Colonel Powell and the entire team at the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office with the Kansas Traffic Safety Silver Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Colonel Powell, you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of County Commissioners, and of course, Mr. Stewart, and AAA Kansas and AAA Club Alliance. On behalf of Sheriff Easter and of course, all the men and women that serve the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, and of course, the citizenry throughout Sedgwick County, we appreciate the recognition we've received by virtue of this award, and, you know, we're fully aware of the last thing that one of our citizens like to see is flashing blue and red lights in the back, in the rearview window, or the rearview mirror, and a deputy exiting a patrol car to say good morning to them for potentially a traffic offense or something like that. However, as we know, especially in the recent past, traffic offenses and injuries and fatalities have become almost of paramount importance here in Sedgwick County on what appears to be just a regular, ongoing basis, and it's imperative that we continue to educate our citizenry on the fact of how important following of the rules of the roads are, making sure they use the proper safety equipment in their vehicles that's provided, and drive with due regard, and following the, again, the traffic rules. Of course, through the support of the Board of County Commissioners, and helping us work with the citizenry in identifying areas that need more emphasis on traffic enforcement, and then also, at the same time, potential road improvements and things like that that can be done at other levels to help effectively reduce the accident rate through our county. But again, it's our pleasure to be able to serve the citizens here in Sedgwick County, and we appreciate their efforts throughout the county in trying to help us be more effective and efficient drivers and be safe when we do it. So thank you for your support, and again, thank you for the recognition by your organization, sir.
Mr. Stewart and Colonel Powell, thank you very much, both of you, for being here.
All right.
Traffic safety is very important to us.
Thank you so much.
And we've had a number of accidents recently as a result of people that like to use their cell phones a lot, so we are very concerned with some of the different problems that we're having out in the county, and we appreciate the Sheriff's Office working on those.
Thank you so much, again.
Thank you. Move to receive and file?
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item L, Register of Deeds Veterans and Military Discount Card Program.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Buckingham, Register of Deeds. I'd like to recognize a couple of people with me this morning. James Bauer is the creator of Veteran Bargains website, which lists all of the veteran discounts that are offered here in Cedric County. Also is Hutch Hutchinson and Patty Neffco with Veterans Providers Coalition of Cedric County. The Veteran and Military Discount Card Program will be a government-issued photo ID that will be beneficial by helping veterans save money with discounts on goods and services while also encouraging veterans to file their DD-214 discharge papers with the Register of Deeds office. We plan to collaborate with the Veteran Bargains, Veteran Providers Coalition, and businesses to connect veterans, active-duty military personnel with merchants who choose to honor their military service through special discounts and promotions, and I would ask that you recommend taking action to create the Veteran Military Discount Card Program.
Well, Ms. Buckingham, thank you very much for being here, and we also appreciate Patty and Hutch for being here, and Mr. Bowers also. This is a program that Buckingham brought to us here some time back as an idea. It's a great idea. Commissioner Howell and I have talked about it several times also. The main point is that those of us that have a military ID, when we go into different locations, we can just show our retired military ID, and it goes pretty smoothly. But there are a number of folks that have served but that don't have a military ID. But one of the items, one of the services that our Register of Deeds provides, and we've got cards that I've passed out to all the veterans that I meet, where they can file their DD-214 with the Register of Deeds. And for those of you who don't know what a DD-214 is, it's the most important document that someone that leaves the military gets, because it proves that they were in service. It lists all of the different locations that they served, the rank that they retired at and so forth, or if they didn't retire, if they exited the military under honorable conditions, how that they exited the military. So it is a critical document. Our Register of Deeds files those documents for free, and they are not accessible by the community at large. Only the veterans or their next of kin, if later on the next of kin needs that document for some veterans' benefits, can it be accessed. In addition, they will give the veteran back, I think it's five certified copies of that DD-214, so if they need one, putting it in a safe somewhere, that they have a certified copy, that that is a DD-214. The ID card, the idea that our Register of Deeds Buckingham came up with, is an opportunity for folks like our Veterans Discount Website that Mr. Bowers has available, that they can now show that they really were a veteran, and they only get that card after they've filed a DD-214, because there's a concern out there among veterans of stolen valor, of people that say, hey, I served in Vietnam, or I served here and there, and they didn't do any of the kind, but they want recognition. So this does a couple things. First of all, we're not going to have someone going up saying, hey, I'm a veteran that never served a day in their life, that's trying to get some of the valor and the recognition for being a veteran, but it also recognizes that veteran's service to our community and to our country by giving them some way of identifying that they truly are a veteran, and when they go into different locations, they can show that ID card and get some discounts from a number of businesses that are recognizing the service to our country by those men and women that serve their country. So I truly think that it's a great idea that Register of Deeds Buckingham and her staff have come up with. I truly appreciate Mr. Bowers, Hutch and Patty, what they do every single day for our veterans. I am very pleased with that. As a matter of fact, just, I'll put in a pitch now rather than later on, because Hutch and Patty may leave, but let me find a piece of paper here. On Friday, June 28th, they have, starting at 11:30, Veterans Providers Coalition of Sedgwick County meets at First United Methodist Church, 330 North Broadway, Meredith Hall, which is down in the basement. We invite everyone that cares about our veterans to attend this event. I know that Commissioner Howell and I try and attend every single month, because we truly want to be supporting our veterans, but this coalition brings together a lot of people that serve our veterans community. So Ms. Buckingham is going to speak at that about this very thing that we're going to talk about today, and I appreciate her doing that. I've probably talked too long, Mr. Howell. I'll give you an opportunity.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, again, Chairman is retired military, and I want to appreciate him for his service to our country, and I love the fact that he is so passionate about the military. I only served for five years. I say only, but I don't have a permanent ID like he does, and so I especially appreciate this. What a great thing for me to have, and I just think it's awesome at the county, and especially you, Ms. Buckingham, that you have brought this to us for consideration. By the way, I think you're leading the state on this issue.
I am, yes, I am. There's not another Register of Deeds that's actually offering this, and they're going to, they're watching to see how it's going to work here in Cedric County, and then I think they might follow suit. So it's kind of exciting.
And I think that to recognize veterans for their service is wonderful, and for businesses that want to give a small discount to show appreciation to veterans is just really a wonderful way to say thank you, and I think it's wonderful that that's happening. I want to say thank you especially to Hutch and Patty for your service to this community, and of course, for James, for you working so hard to find these opportunities for veterans, and this card is going to really open up the door to do that. So I would just like to add one thing, and that is, this is a government-issued ID, and it's going to be a photo ID, I assume?
Yes, that's correct.
And we'll get these from the Register of Deeds on the second floor of this building, County Courthouse, and with that being a photo, government-issued ID, I'd like to see this add to the legislative platform to adjust our voter ID allowable documents to include this document that people could produce for purposes of voting, and I think we need to add that to our platform. So I'd make that request as well, but, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We would establish a Veterans and Military Discount Card Program for citizens of Cedric County.
Thank you. I'd like to second that. Do we have any further discussion? Commissioner O'Donnell?
No. I just wanted to thank our Register of Deeds for bringing this, working with these groups, and acknowledging that sometimes political decisions in Chicago can work in Wichita, Kansas.
Yeah, that's actually where I found the program.
Right.
I was looking around, doing a little research, in Chicago, Cook County, and I reached out to them, and they were gracious enough to share how their program worked, and I thought, you know, this would be really great for Cedric County.
Yeah, so I thought, I just, I see a lot of the irony in that, so this is, this is great, and to echo what Commissioner Dennis said, Hutch and Patty are not just friends of mine, but friends to the entire veterans' community, and those actively serving, not just veterans as well, but that's their passion, but to all those serving in the armed forces, it's their life's mission, so we love them and love our veterans, so thank you, Tanya.
Oh, you're welcome, and if possible, I'd like to give the opportunity for James and Patty and Hutch maybe to come up. I don't know if that's possible.
Of course.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record, although we all know what your name is.
I'm James Bauer, and I own the website Veteran Bargains.com. First of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to come and speak and for consideration of this program, and I'd particularly like to thank Tanya and Patty and Hutch for working with me in this venture. This started out just kind of as me looking for bargains, a way to save money as a disabled veteran that served during the Vietnam War. It's since, has expanded to this website, and I find it's a way that I can go out and serve our community, our veterans, and help to generate revenue for the businesses that give acknowledgement to the veterans for their service and the active-duty members. I'm going to give acknowledgement here to God, because this whole thing has come together, because he's led us together as a group, and he's allowed me to continue to put this website together and to generate benefits for our veterans, and he's where all the glory goes, so I thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for what you're doing. Appreciate it. Hutch and Patty, you want to say anything?
Okay.
State your name for the record.
Patty Neffco. I'm with Vet to Vet Support Command and the Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County. Now, I'm going to scoot over so you can get in the picture here. Come on.
Yeah, and I'm the founder of the Veteran Providers Coalition of Cedric County, and I just want to thank the county for supporting us from day one. We've been doing this since February 20th of 2015, and the county's been there every step of the way, and it makes my day every day, just knowing that, so.
Very good. Thank you, Lacy. Thank you, Pete. David, Michael, Jim, we consider you all friends of ours, and we want to get to know you more. I will say one thing, that yes, thank you for the coalition meeting announcement, David, Chairman Dennis, but also, very quickly, the Veteran Awareness Expo 2019. If you are a veteran, if you are a veteran family, if you're active duty, if you are the general public, we want you to come to the Indian Center on August 3rd for our Fourth Annual Veterans Awareness Expo. Guess what? You can file your DD-214, and you can get your photo ID card, at least the process started, with Tanya and her team at this event. It is free. It's all free. The only thing is, if you want lunch, you might want to buy something from a food truck otherwise. Programs, McConnell Air Force Base, the tanker, the leadership, everything is free, over sixty providers, and we encourage you to come, especially to see Tanya and her team for these cards. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before we take a vote, let me remind all the public that's listening today that we'll pass this, but I don't know that it's going to happen instantly. I don't know how long it's going to take Tanya to get the cameras and the IDs and so forth, so I don't want to rush at your door, and then suddenly we can't provide it. So do you know about when you'll be able to start this?
It'll take a couple of weeks, and then we'll get with communication here and let them get the word out.
Very good.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. Well, I appreciate what you do for our veterans every day. I've said that a number of times, so thank you very much, and for this idea. With that, Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. And before we go to the next item, Commissioner O'Donnell has rescheduled his noon meeting, so we'll continue the meeting, but we ought to take a little break right at this point in time. So let's take a break until twenty minutes until noon, and we'll see everybody back there.
In a minute.
Domestic Waterwell Code of Sedgwick County.
Chris, welcome.
All right, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As stated, public hearing to propose adoption of an updated code for domestic water wells. So this is a public hearing for the code adoption. This does impact unincorporated Sedgwick County only. This is a KDHE reviewed code. They have a fairly robust review process that we went through. We've also complied with all of their publishing requirements, which is why this public hearing's a little bit more, a little bit more time in between when we set the hearing and when we're actually holding it. This will give us a KDHE approved code. Again, they've approved it as it stands now. Once the commission approves this code, it will go back to them for a final stamp and then be on file with them. It was last adopted or last changed in 2006. At that time, the code was not, was not approved by KDHE. So that is an important part of this, is that we will now have that coordinated and approved code. And this code does only impact residential wells in unincorporated. The primary change that goes throughout is updating the management agency to MABCD versus references to Sedgwick County Code Enforcement. There were several changes and updates to state statutes that this then corrects and ensures we have the proper reference. We also had some areas where we found inconsistent or language that could be interpreted as inconsistent and/or was redundant. We were able to remove that. We had an inspection. This is specifically if there's a vacant or a vacant property that's going to be purchased, we do an inspection on any wells on that property. There are more inspections that then take place if anything's going to be built there. So we realized that was somewhat of a redundant fee or that we didn't require that fee in order to recoup our cost. So we removed that $50 fee for the vacant property inspection. We then also at a request that initiated the review of this code was to remove some of the restrictions that were in it. Specifically, it expressly restricted or disallowed the use of surface water for home use. So that now, there is an allowance for that as long as that meets safe drinking water standards and is properly treated. The process of this code began some time ago with a water well advisory board. They, so while this has been a few years in coordination between the original request and then finally taking it to KDHE, it has, it has been through a few boards. The original board was, of course, no longer in place when, when we got that approval back. It had kind of already taken it that far. So once received from KDHE, we did have the water well advisory board review and approve this code. We do believe that it stands well to provide for the public safety as well as to support local residences and the businesses who install wells. And then, as you see in the picture, we'd like to avoid situations like we had there, which somehow that well blew up, was destroyed. So our staff recommendation, Commissioners, is that we openly open the public hearing, accept any public comment that we may have, close that hearing, and adopt the updated code. I will also, of course, gladly stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris this morning? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of the amended version of the Domestic Waterwell Code of Sedgwick County for all districts. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, excuse me. Lonny Wright, 1721 South Zulu, Director. When you talked about the vacant property and when it sold, that there would be a waterwell inspection, I thought the previous commission removed the requirement for drinking water and wastewater inspections on property transfer.
State your name for the record.
Lonny Munyon, MABCD, Domestic Well Specialist for Sedgwick County. The property title transfer inspections were done away with. However, there are a number of properties that had perhaps a manufactured home on it. The manufactured home goes away. The property is sold and somebody buys that. Before they can utilize the water well or the existing wastewater system, our office goes out and does an inspection on those particular instances. It's, we do not do property title transfer inspections at this point based on the fact that the requirement was done away with. I hope that clarifies it for you, Lonny.
Thank you. We still have the public comment portion open. Does anyone else wish to speak on public comment? Seeing no one, I'd like to call, close the public comment at this point in time, bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to thank the staff for the presentation. And actually, they worked, they worked on this for, I think, a couple of years now to get to this point. It's gone through KDHE approval and maybe not for final approval, but they, they have already seen this and they've made, they've given us a thumbs up, I guess, on this. So I appreciate all the work you guys have done. This has been a long process. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I would, I would be willing to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Item N, Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the International Building Code, 2018 Edition with Amendments.
Chris, you're still on.
Sir, good morning again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. So this will amend Article 2, Section 2 of our UBTC, which is specifically the International Building Code. This is the code that, excuse me, governs construction of commercial buildings. So last was adopted in March of 2016. That was the 2012 IBC with 144 amendments. We're happy to report that the 2018 version is down to 91 amendments. A lot of that based on, as is usually the case with those administrative areas, we're able to consolidate or remove, and then areas where the basic code now includes information or requirements that we had in amendments previously. We also adopted Appendix J with this. That applies to the city only. That is for grading permits, and that just ensures that we are in step with the public works requirements in the city. As kind of mentioned there, the code incorporation, the UBT, UBTC consolidation is where we see quite a few of our amendments on the administrative side. This code does cover, of course, all of Sedgwick County and the city of Wichita. It includes the cities and the counties with which we have contracts and assist. We have had very, again, a lot of great cooperation and work with our contractors and those who use the code, who are happy with and very cooperative with the requirements. And we've not, thus have not seen any safety or management issues and allowed us to go forward the way that we have. Again, as I've stated, a lot of our amendments basically just increase the manageability of the code. As with public works, there's a lot of interface with fire code and other UBTC articles that would be the trades codes, plumbing, electrical, mechanical. And then where we have our own permit and fee schedules, several of our amendments address that and kick you away from the code and then back to our own permit fee tables. The process that this code followed was the formation of a code committee formed approximately a year ago. That began, that was a mix of staff as well as some industry representatives from architectural and contractual firms. The, that, at the completion of their work, we took this to some stakeholder review sessions. Those were very successful. We had 70 individuals representing 40 or 50 different companies that showed up to those. A few different sessions in which we went through each amendment. They reviewed that, gave comment. We did make a few adjustments based on that. But again, very, very cooperative effort, so a lot of great feedback from that. Then the code was reviewed by the Board of Code Standards and Appeals, which is a standard process. They saw it a few different times. I had a few minor suggestions that we also incorporated. WABA has been involved throughout that process, does approve the code. I spoke with Wes after the first discussion. He said he was not going to stay, as is obvious, but that, remind you all, we have his support. WABA's main interface on this is to facilitate a lot of the stakeholder meetings. Since it's not the residential code, they don't weigh in quite as much as they do in that case. But again, we feel that we've gotten great staff, community, and industry support across departments as well as all those involved. And then a reminder on this one, that once we are completed here, I do require Kansas State Fire Marshal approval of the fire and life safety chapters of this code, which is any amendments we have to Chapter 7, 8, 9, and 10. So we will, we will send that to them at the conclusion of our adoption. So a few amendments to address quickly here. Several of them include exemptions from permits. So when we interface the code with local conditions such as frost levels, and in this case, the example I pulled out here is a retaining wall. So retaining wall has to be a certain amount in the ground, of course, based on ground conditions. We also have other requirements for railing heights and different things. So when we add all that up, we say that if you have a wall that's, a retaining wall that's going to be below 30 inches, we won't require you to get a permit for that. You can just go ahead and do it. So again, one area where the code in general covers any retention wall, we say, well, we're only going to permit those if they get to the point where we feel they need an inspection. Another fairly significant one with three and four unit dwellings, since anything over a two-unit dwelling becomes a commercial building, we add some required fire separations between those. So if we're able to get the proper fire separation between the dwellings, then we can treat each under residential rules. That would avoid us having to get into a discussion on fire sprinkler systems with those. So certainly won't stop someone from sprinkling those buildings if they want to, but we give them another option there. Then applicable to Wichita only, there are some areas of enhanced ADA requirements. Sedgwick County, we follow baseline ADA. Wichita, again, has some extra, there are four areas that are addressed in that side, and will be addressed in greater detail, of course, when we take this to city council. Then also in Wichita only, based on the fire department response there, we increase the areas that vehicles can, the areas where vehicle maintenance and storage takes place, we allow them a slightly larger square footage. We do not allow that in unincorporated county based on fire response and the amount of water that our firefighters have available in the county. Excuse me. Another one to point out, hangers. So baseline code, this would be for storage of an aircraft only. Baseline code allows for 12,000 feet, square feet, in which you don't have to have automatic sprinklers. We maintain that in the county. For the city, we allow those to be up to 18,000 square feet without fire sprinklers. And then we also allow them to be five feet closer together than the baseline code. And again, we're able to do that based on fire response, and that then is consistent with Wichita Fire Department. Few more with regard to hotel and church approach canopies. As you see there on the lower left, this could be for sidewalk pedestrian approach or for a vehicle approach. Basic code would say that those have to meet the same fire, sorry. Basic code would say those have to meet the same fire ratings as the building. We do not require that. We give them a, give them an exemption there. Thank you, Kate. Also restaurants with an occupancy of less than 299. So we see in basic code that an occupancy of 300 drives a lot of requirements. The special inspections we'll talk about in a few minutes, fire sprinklers, a lot of things trigger at that 300 occupancy. Based on, of course, the fact that there's already heat and fire in a restaurant, baseline code requires them to be sprinkled. We also have an exemption there where if they add a third exit or an automatic fire alarm system, we will not require fire sprinklers as a part of that project. And both, both Wichita and Fire Department and Sedgwick County Fire District 1 support that and incorporate that in their code. And then lastly, one of the bigger discussions, and I'm happy, of course, to get into numbers if we feel it appropriate here, but when we're talking about special inspections, the main thing to emphasize, this is the in-process inspection. So these are not MABCD inspections. These are what onsite engineers who are retained by the owner slash contractor of the project perform. And the concept here is that as code and building technology has evolved, there is a lot less required for safety margins of material. So when you're talking whether wind limits or snow load or any type of load limits, shear limits, anything in that regard, it's better to have the right amount of material and ensure that that material is, the correct material, that it's free of voids, that it was installed properly, that extra quality check, than to spend the extra money and resources to put just added material in there as the safety margin. So the code requires special inspections to be accomplished on all commercial projects. We do know that on the bigger commercial projects, that is paramount, but there are a lot of smaller projects, those that go into the commercial code where we do not see that as a requirement. We don't see that as a safety concern, I should say, and would, of course, drive a cost to the owners of those projects that is not needed. So our amendment there is far less restrictive than the basic IBC. The current amendment is more restrictive than our previous amendments. We left the size and height restrictions in place, and those would be cases where you build a huge building, but you're building it as a warehouse, storage facility, not much occupancy. We did tighten the occupancy-based restrictions in our code a little bit. Again, we use those based on several of the triggers that trigger other code items, and we base that number, the numbers that we use mostly on feedback from our stakeholders, the point at which our contractors and our architects say, I'm going to use special inspections at this point anyway because I'm better off, I save money by having special inspections versus excess material. So again, happy to go into those details if someone would like us to, but I, for the sake of time, I'm also happy to forego that. And so with that, Commissioners, again, it's our recommendation that we open the hearing, accept any comment, then close the hearing and adopt the, adopt the updated code.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris today? I don't see any. I just want to give you kudos for all of these different codes you went through. This one, you had 91 amendments to. It takes a lot of time to go page by page through a big document like this and figure out exactly how it needs to apply to Wichita and Sedgwick County. So thanks to staff for what they've done on each and every one of these. We appreciate it. But at this point in time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the proposed adoption of the International Building Code 2018 Edition with Amendments. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this code? Anyone? Seeing no one, I want to bring it back to the board. I move to adopt the recommendation for the building code. We have a second? Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple quick questions. On the hangers issue for the county, is that the same as we have currently at 18,000 foot versus 12,000 foot? That's the same thing we have in the current code?
Correct.
So that's not really a change from, from current. Thank you so much for that. The, one of these I don't understand, I don't, this is 2.2.440. Sprinkler system to be installed throughout a structure having one or more stories with occupant load of 30 or more. Can you talk about that one a little bit? Or did you already talk about it? I don't know that I heard that one.
You want to hit that one? And I'm, excuse me, Commissioner, you said it was which one?
2240.
And that's not specific to the three and four family dwellings?
No, I talked about 30 feet or more above the lowest level of the fire department vehicle access, so.
That was amendment, I'm Richard Chamberlain, work for the building department. That was amendment that was from previous, the 2012 amendment that the fire department, Fire District 1 wants in there. So it was just kept over from the 2012.
So it's a carry forward. I wasn't aware of this one, but, okay, so same as what we have currently?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think I only had one other, one other question. That would be about the live, there's a live load requirement. It's 2.2.800.
Right. And that's carried over from, we've had that amendment for a long time that we don't allow the reduction. The, it's usually mostly by the middle building people. They want to use the, what's called a tributary live load reduction. If they do that, you're building down to a live load of 12 pounds. And so our structural engineers do not think that's too low of a live load. So we've always required the middle buildings to not use that live load reduction, that they had to stay with the 20 pounds.
That one particularly, I think, would probably have a financial hit for the construction of that building. So I guess I'd like to maybe review that one going forward, but I certainly approve it today. I think it's fine right now, but I think maybe it's not a topic for us to discuss in the future. But I'm pleased to support all the work you've done. And by the way, excellent job, again, all your staff and you, Richard, especially. Great document. Appreciate all your work on this.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And I don't see any other questions. Did you get the second, Madam Clerk? Very good. It was very faint, two hearing aids. I thought the Commissioner Cruz seconded it.
I had a frog in my throat when I did it.
I just wanted to make sure we were legal. I don't see anything else. Anyone else want to speak? Madam Clerk, call her own.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item O, Public Hearing for the Proposed Adoption of the International Existing Building Code, 2018 with Amendments.
Chris, you're still on.
Yes, sir. Good morning again, Commissioners. Chris Labrum, MABCD. And this takes us to the, in conjunction with the IBC, takes us to Article 3 of Section 2 of our UBTC, which is the Existing Building Code. Let's see. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that, Kate. I'm probably not helping here, am I? So similarly, this, this code follows a nest with the 2018 IBC. So also, the adoption timeline is the same. Now, this, in this case, we did increase amendments. On the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about why that's actually a good thing in this case. Normally, normally, we don't consider that a good thing. But again, the same work to ensure incorporation with our other codes and consolidation within the UBTC. applicability is the same as with the IBC and also those, again, where they work together. We have not seen any issues with this code, been very happy with the way it's been working. So two amendments, and in this case, with the manageability, the UBTC references, as stated, are some of those amendments that stay in place. Where we increased the amendments was to allow choice of code usage. So that gives then the architect, contractor, whoever's working with this, a choice between IBC and IEBC depending on the project or sections of that. And then it also ensures clarity where we know that they can't jump back and forth between the code within a specific project. Then we also have several amendments in place to follow local, both Wichita and Sedgwick County floodplain guidance versus the generic guidance that comes with the code. And we, as with all of our codes here, still remove the energy efficiency code requirements there. Excuse me, that should be the, the energy conservation code requirements. So that's the, that speaks for the increase in amendments with this adoption versus the latest. Follow the same process. This code was reviewed at the same time by the same body of individuals that did the IBC. So again, no, no differences on this slide from the last. The main usage of this code is when we get into remodel, renovation, or repair of the existing high-rise structures. Again, only applies to commercial. And so what this does accommodates what we refer to as nonconformance, where due to the fact that a building was built with a prior code, we have stipulations to bring what is absolutely necessary or impacts safety up to current code and then ensure that any remodeled or renovated areas are compatible with the prior code, what is in place based on the prior code. So it allows us to tie those together and, again, make for accommodations in those cases. There, so very little change in this one compared to the amendments from last time that we had. A few that I will speak to are in analysis and repair of damaged structures. So we ensured that we had a stipulation there that if the overall structure is deemed safe, that we do not require a full analysis, engineering analysis of the entire structure as the baseline code would imply or require. So once it's deemed that we don't see anything happen that compromise the entire building, only the places that are damaged or will be repaired are going to be required for analysis and then repair. And then when we get into tenant buildings, so if we have multiple tenants in a building, they often have their own electrical service. And the basic code requires that if you have multiple electrical services entering the building, that you would have to have firewalls to separate those. By definition, a firewall is a pretty extensive and expensive endeavor. So we give several options for fire barriers to meet that same safety requirement, but not require a full firewall. And again, happy to answer questions on any more of those, but this, this, the changes on this are minimal and most of them, again, come to us after discussion with those who design and build and work on these and in conjunction with our plan reviewers. So with that, I will recommend that we, again, open a public hearing, accept comment, close that hearing, and update the code, and we'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Before I open up public comment, do any Commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up, public comment for the proposed adoption of the International Existing Building Code, 2018 Edition. Seeing one in the audience wish to speak on this code? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. I move that we approve the proposed, the adoption of the International Existing Building Code, 2018 Edition with Amendments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One question.
Commissioner Howell.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just have one question. On portable buildings, let's say it's a, a building that can be moved around, it could be a shed, or it could be an outbuilding of some sort, it could be a boat or an RV or even a mobile home. Does this have jurisdiction on, on electrical systems, plumbing systems inside those portable buildings?
The, the existing building code or the IBC?
The, either one of them.
Normally, those would be under the IBC and under our zoning requirements, that they would require that temporary building permit when they make those, when they make that application. And then, yes, Commissioner, if there's electrical associated with that, then we would have an electrical inspection or potentially electrical permit included in that. But those, there are several different parts of our UBTC that cover those temporary structure situations.
Is that clarified in one of the codes that these portable structures would have this type of regulation oversight? Maybe a weird question, I guess.
I'll let Mr. Chamberlain define that.
So what are you meaning by portable structure?
Well, imagine a mobile home, for example. It can be moved on, onto a site and then moved someplace else.
Yeah, the mobile home, yeah, mobile home, that would be, that's not, there, that's the, there's a mobile home ordinance in there. Yeah, there's a mobile home ordinance that covers mobile home parks. So there's that, that IBC and the existing building code only cover commercial buildings.
Okay. And I might even go so far as say even like RVs, for example. Obviously, they're, you can move them around. But they have some of the same electrical, electrical and mechanical systems in them, and there's a health and safety aspect of those as well.
Right. For commercial building, they have to have a third-party inspection at the factory, and there's companies that are listed to do that. And so they would, for a commercial building, since it's assembled at a factory, they would have to do the third-party inspection, and that's what we require them to prove that they've done a third-party inspection at the, the factory. And there's only certain groups that can do that, they're licensed to do that.
I, Kate, and when it comes to modification or repair of those, may not be as it was designed in the factory or whatever it was that built that. But the reason this came up in my mind is because when I used to work in the aircraft industry, we used to install electrical systems in these airplanes that were, they'd fly in from another, another state. Perhaps we would install something and they'd fly away. So I, and some of these things are very similar to, some of the things might be in these codes. I'm just curious if there were, in my mind, it came up as, you know, who has, who has authority over, over that? I wasn't sure.
Well, basically, the third-party inspection, you need to certify that meets whatever code they looked at under at the time. So I So I guess if someone wanted to go into a portable building, or add electrical, then they would have to hire an electrician, an electrical contractor, to pull electrical permit and then do the work.
Okay. I don't think it's an issue at the moment. So, thank you, Chairman. I'm very supportive of the motion today. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. Did you want to make a motion?
You already, somebody already did.
Oh, okay. We got a motion in a second, I'm sorry. Okay. We've got a motion in a second. No further discussion. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Chris. Next item, please.
Item P, Consideration of a Funding Agreement Between USD 259 and Comcare in the Amount of $1,029,000 for Mental Health Services Provided to Children and Their Families.
Afternoon, Joan.
Oh, good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, although it's probably afternoon at this point. Joan Tammany with Comcare. I'm here today because Comcare has, again, been selected by the legislature to continue the school mental health intervention pilot program with USD 259. We were selected because of our expertise working with youth who experience social, emotional, and mental health issues. We're one of six pilot sites, again, three rural, three urban districts. The funding before you today establishes the behavioral health intervention teams in 22 of the schools with USD 259, staffed by therapists and case managers by Comcare. The schools were selected by leadership at 259, and our target is, again, to serve 700 to 800 youths. This includes five elementary schools, five special day schools, six middle schools, and six high schools who were known to have need. The overall goal of the program is to improve social and emotional wellness and the outcomes for students by increasing access to treatment providers. Funding for the program is a combination of the $1,029,000 funding from the Kansas Department of Education paid through USD 259, along with fees we collect for Medicaid and commercial insurance by serving the kids in the school. We're excited to continue the collaboration. We think it'll further enhance the collaboration and seek to serve more kids that weren't served this year. Each of the participants, or each of the partnerships, I should say, the six partnerships across the state are required to submit reports to the Kansas Board of Education and legislative champions and legislative committees on a regular basis. I'm pleased to report that USD 259 and Comcare, our little motto between us now is one plus one is greater than two by partnering. Three outcomes were selected by the legislature for the past year and for the current year, and they focus around school performance, school attendance, and behavior of youth in the classroom. Our partnership in this past school year, which ends the end of June, served over 730 youth and families. Four weeks ago, Comcare and USD 259, along with a couple of high school students who participated in the program, did a news segment with KSN. And Dr. Irving with USD 259 reported in that news article the following outcomes: 66% of students showed improved school attendance, 68% of those who participated showed improved behavior, and 52% showed improved academic. So it definitely shows that early intervention works. Students and families have been providing us feedback, and one of the things that's most significant for both the youth and the parents or legal guardians is that the services are delivered right in their natural environment during the school day, so the kids don't have to be taken out of school to be transported to appointments during the school day or after school. They can normal, they live a normal life after their school day ends. But more importantly, the parents don't have to keep asking for time off work to come pick up these youth and take them to appointments. So it's a win-win. So my request is to ask that you approve the funding agreement and authorize the Chairman to sign the contract.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it, Joan. I know you came to the Commission here not long ago and gave us a briefing on this also, and you've had an opportunity to go around and talk to each of the Commissioners about it. Right now, I don't see any questions at all.
Thank you.
So, we think this is a great program. I've touted it at a number of places that I've been. Most recently, we were talking about business impact at Greater Wichita Partnership, and we talked about it again during that recent meeting here just about a week ago. So we've got a lot of people that are behind this and supporting this program. We think it's a great program. I hope that we can add to our legislative agenda next year to expand it throughout Sedgwick County rather than just USD 259, that I've heard from other superintendents who would like to have something like this also.
And to speak to that, I shared this with you guys, but they had some cost savings for a computer database project last year, and they're putting that $2 million into opportunities for all school districts across Kansas to apply for those funds for this upcoming school year. We know of two districts locally that have applied. Others have had great conversations around partnerships with us, but chose not to apply for the coming school year. So the two that applied will learn in mid-July if they get any funding.
Very good. Well, thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I guess I just want to, how do the parents and students know that this is available in the school? Is there, is there like a bulletin that goes out to the parents?
Yeah, the schools promote it in their orientations and with student-teacher-parent conferences and other naturally occurring opportunities, and it's on their pages.
Okay. I just wonder, you know, can, because I received that list of the other day about which schools were, I guess, because it wasn't in my school, so.
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Don't see any other comments. I move that we approve the agreement and authorize made of signs.
Second.
We have a motion in two seconds. It's popular up here.
[laughing].
Don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item Q, KDHE Permit Application for Relocation of a Medical Waste Transfer Station for Stericycle Incorporated.
Good morning again, or good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Susan Erlinwine with Cedric County Environmental. Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires that any solid waste permit must go in front of the local board to make sure it, excuse me, complies with the local solid waste management plan. Before you, you have a permit from Stericycle, who is moving their location from West Street, around the corner basically, to Pawnee. So it's a relocation of a medical waste transfer station. The Solid Waste Committee reviewed this at their last meeting. They determined that it is in compliance with our solid waste management plan. We need companies like this to take care of the medical waste generated in our community. Representatives of Stericycle have been here all morning, sorry, guys. They'd be happy to answer any questions you have about their operation.
Very good. Do you have anything you'd like to say, or just here to answer questions?
Ted Gude, I'm the District Operations Manager for the Wichita area. No, I thank you for reviewing this and the potential of it passing. We're trying to, we have 21 team members that are in the Shred It facility, which is on Pawnee, and we have six that are in the HCS facility, which is on West Street. We're trying to get them together, right? Stericycle bought Shred It a couple years ago, and I have two managers that are managing out of the Shred It location, and it would be really nice to get everybody under one roof.
Very good. Well, this is just a move from one location to another.
That's all it is.
Kind of administrative.
Very much so.
Does any Commissioners, I don't see that they have any questions whatsoever. So I move that we approve the permit application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thanks for being here all day. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
Item R, 2019 Cedric County Solid Waste Management Plan Annual Update.
Welcome back, Susan.
Yes. Good afternoon again. I'm pulling the plan up now. Kansas Department of Health and Environment requires every county to review the solid waste management plan on an annual basis, and so this is the annual review of our plan. It has been approved by the Solid Waste Management Committee. So this is a state requirement that we get that into them this month. The requirements include any changes from our last update, any updated demographics, population numbers, solid waste committee members, how is our local solid waste system working, and data related to that. How much trash do we produce? How much do we recycle? So I'll quickly review that information for you. We have 17 licensed trash waste haulers in Cedric County. We produced over 394,000 tons of municipal solid waste, and that was a slight decrease from the previous year. And if you look at this five-year trend from 2014 to 2018, you could see how the amount of trash disposed of has cycled. You can also look at that over 20-year trend from 1998 to 2018 to see how it has decreased over a longer period of time. We also can look at that, and the state requires this, as the number of pounds produced per person per day. You can see back in 1998, it was almost seven pounds per person per day locally, and now we're down to 4.21. So we've been decreasing the amount that we throw away. And part of that's due to recycling. We have ability to capture some of the recycled numbers in our community. We do not receive numbers from like the metal recyclers. They won't give us the numbers, and we don't have a way of getting that from them. But we have received over 63,000 tons of materials from the facilities that do report. And again, you can see that on the five-year trend. And over the 20-year trend, you can see that we have increased quite a bit over time, the amount of material being recycled in our community. Curbside recycling, we did ask the haulers who provide that, give us an idea of the number of customers in their community that recycle, and Waste Connections has over 37,000 customers that have curbside recycling in Cedric County, and Air Capital Waste, over 2,000. We did not receive numbers from the other providers. And as you know, the drop-off bins that we had at the Dillon Stores and some other grocery stores have all gone away now. Waste Connections paid for those bins to be at those stores, it was cooperative agreement, but due to so much trash being put in those recycled bins, unfortunately, that has stopped. But people can still drop off material, international paper, and ProKansas Miller Recycling. Composting facilities, there are two locations that are open to the general public. That's Burke CND Landfield has a composting area, and Evergreen Recycling up at 53rd Street Northwest to Broadway. Also, some small cities provide it for the residents, where the residents can bring material there, it's composted, and they can pick up the material as well. Specific waste, we have to address that in our plan. Household hazardous waste, we had over 25,000 participants in 2018, over a million pounds of material brought to the facility. And as you know, we have a swap-and-shop area in the facility where people can pick up material that's in good condition, take it home for free. We've worked with the DEA on the medical events that they have, and take controlled drugs when those events occur. Of the material brought into the facility, we had 375,000 pounds go through the swap-and-shop area, and over 10,000 customers use that. They don't pay for it, we don't pay for disposal, that's a win-win for everybody. And if we had to pay for the disposal, that would have been over $100,000. So that works out well. We also have five remote collection events every year where we go out into the community to provide this service. We also work with businesses that generate a small amount of hazardous waste. We worked with 439 of those last year, received over 75,000 pounds of material from them. They benefit from our contracts where we have cheaper rates than if they contracted with company directly. So five-year trends on the HHWs in blue, the material coming in, and the swap-and-shop is in red. It's kind of stabilized over the five-year term, but if you look at the 20-year, you can see how much we've increased in volume for these services. On the customers, same thing, blue for the HHW customers, red for the swap-and-shop, and how it's increased over time. So we like getting the word out and letting people know about our services. Construction and demolition material is received at two facilities in the community, at Burke CND and a construction and demolition facility north, just up at 37th Street North and West Street. They've decreased in the amount of material they've received last year, just over 149,000 tons. Over time, you can see a five-year trend that the construction and demolition material has decreased. And this is material like drywall, shingling, carpets, two-by-fours, concrete. Over 20-year trend, you can see how it's changed. And part of the reason for this is the economy either was booming and people are building a lot, or they're not, and so that's going to reflect that. We also have the Bulky Waste Coupon Program, where we have coupons we distribute to people who call to get those, or go online to get those. We've issued over 44,000 pound coupons, I mean, since 2012, and it's good for 1,000 pounds of free disposal at either of the transfer stations. One's located north at 37th, near West Street, the other's at 55th, South and Hoover. Not everyone who gets a coupon actually uses it, so we encourage people to only ask for these bulky waste coupons if you plan to use it. So usually, we have a four-month period that those are available for use. And we'll be doing that again this summer, probably in August is when it will start. We have special cleanup programs where we work with townships, illegal dumping out in the county along the roads. They provide the labor to pick up the material. We pay for the disposal. Since we started this in 2002, we've paid for over 1,798,000 pounds of illegally dumped material out on the county roads. 56,000 pounds were in 2018. We also have special cleanup programs. We work with Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department when they have properties called in that have a lot of waste around the property, and they go out there and talk about finding the people unless they clean it up. People are willing, but they can't afford it. So we provide dumpsters that's out of our solid waste budget to do that. The bottom picture, you can see a before and after of material that was cleaned up. We also provide vouchers. If it's not a lot of material that doesn't need a dumpster, the people are willing to take it to the disposal facility. We give them a voucher, so we're billed instead of the people. We also have worked with neighborhood cleanups. We've done that in some of the townships, and we've done it in Oaklawn, Salem Township, Payne Township, any of them that want a neighborhood cleanup, we provide dumpsters for that as well. We also work with storm debris. We have a tub grinder, an air-coating burner, to help get rid of the debris after severe storms. And we've actually taken the tub grinder to small cities after they have storms, and we mulch the material there, and then the mulch is available for the residents. We have 22 sites for Christmas tree drop-off. That's in the city of Wichita and other small cities. We provide the site, the material comes, it's chipped, and then the mulch is available for people to take home. Since we started this in 2002, we have received over 92,000 Christmas trees at these sites. Waste tire collection, we just had an event this past April, and we've received over 180,000 tires from 20, over 2,600 vehicles. And I'll be talking about the tire program again right after this presentation. So it's well-received, and you can see from the numbers, over time, we've received over a million tires from the six events we've had in the past. So a lot of tires, they hold water, mosquitoes breed in them, they're unsightly, we like to get rid of them. Medical waste, we just talked about with Stericycle, with you approving their relocation change, and we really need them in our community. But what they don't provide is for them, you and I, taking our drugs somewhere. So this summer, we will be putting out containers like you see in the bottom left. So this summer, we will be putting out containers like you see in the bottom left of that slide from a company where we will put those in police stations at where you see the red dots. So out in Cheney, Valley Center, Bel Air, Mulveen, and Clearwater, we'll be receiving these this summer so citizens can go in, drop off, whether they're controlled or uncontrolled drugs, into these containers, and they'll be properly disposed of. So that's a new service we're providing. And of course, we have public education, telling people where they can recycle material. Household hazardous waste, we go out and give talks at schools, and we have a website for this information. We'll work with handouts at some of these events so they know where they can take the material, and also promote our website, CedricCounty.org. And this is one of the things to see there, is recycling guide that they can click on the type of material they want to recycle and see what local businesses provide that service. KDHG requires that the permits and grants come before the board, and as you can see, Stericycle, you just approved five minutes ago. And the solid waste fee a year ago voted for five dollars and eighty-eight cents per residential base rate and non-residential range from four forty-four to seven eighty-seven per year, and later we'll have a presentation on the solid waste fee today. So all of these projects are paid for from that fee. The medical waste, the drop-off, bulky waste coupons, the electronic waste event that we had, over half a million pounds of material brought to us last year, and we're planning to have that again next year. The waste tire program we just had, working with storm cleanup, all of that comes from the dedicated solid waste fee. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the solid waste plan.
Thank you, Susan. Do we have any questions for Susan? Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Just one question on the medical, let's see, the controlled, the non-controlled drop-off areas. What about having one of those inside the city of Wichita?
There are a few drugstores that are having those. We will be working with the Wichita Police Department to get those in Wichita. At first, we wanted to spread out in the small cities, see how it's working, make sure there aren't any flaws, and then bring it in. We'll be adding to those five I just talked about.
And so, do I understand, this would also include illicit, like someone has methamphetamines or whatever?
Correct.
They could get rid of that there if they want to.
The purpose of this is to not identify the person dropping it off, is to get it out of the environment and dispose of it properly. But because there are controlled drugs, it has to be at a police station. The drug stores that are doing it locally, some of the Walgreens and others, they have to jump through a whole bunch of hoops, have several keys to receive the material, and it's quite a lot of red tape involved in that. Police station would be just like a mailbox, you drop it in and you leave.
And we'll probably, I assume, we'll contract out the collection and disposal of those things that are put in those boxes?
Right. And it's very convenient, actually, for us.
And did you say we're doing e-waste? That's a plan?
The plan for 2020 is to have another electronic.
Okay.
We receive calls on electronics constantly, and where can I get rid of them? How, you know, it's the best way, and we talk to them about it. There are some local stores that take it. Getting rid of a TV can be twenty-five to thirty dollars for each, you know, monitor for a computer or a television set, you'd be paying that. No place is free anymore.
Most likely, those will end up in the landfill or the transfer, people's trash that they take to...
That's correct. We're in the ditch, and then it ends up there.
Yeah, okay. That's all my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. I appreciate everything that you're doing. I want to make sure that we tell the Solid Waste Committee how much we appreciate them working on the plan again this year.
Thank you.
Also, the information you passed along on all of the different, and the amount of hazardous waste that we've got out of the environment is impressive, and as we get item to use in tango here, that's going to be one of the things that we discuss here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
So I appreciate, again, what you all do. With that, I move that we approve the 2019 Cedric County Solid Waste Management Plan.
Second.
Motion of the second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. All right, Susan, you're still up. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item S, report on the 2019 Cedric County Waste Tire Collection Event.
Thank you, Commissioner. As I mentioned before, we've had five other events, and this is the sixth one we've held, where we offer for the public to bring in the waste tires, get them out of the environment. We have illegal dumping of tires. We hear from that from the townships all the time. They're road hazard if they're out in the road, collect water, mosquito breeding habitat, they're nuisance in an ice source, so we're trying to get them out of the environment and take care of them properly. We had April eighteenth for businesses and government, where they're bringing the large trucks to the west yard for dropping these off, and the nineteenth and twentieth for residents. Kind of like to separate those large trucks from the smaller vehicles if we can, especially Mom and Papa may not have backed a trailer up in a while, and it could be entertaining to watch them back up a trailer full of tires. But the point is, we're getting them out of the environment, and these tires are recycled. So we were open those three days, from nine AM to three PM, at the west yard at Forty-Seventh South and West Street. However, each day, we opened early because so many vehicles were there, traffic was backing up on West Street, so we were opening the gates at eight fifteen and letting the cars in, trying to keep the traffic flow going. Here's some photos from it. You see, we had double lines there with the vehicles waiting for a spot to go to where the tires are being dumped. Some of them are large vehicles, full of tires. Some of them were townships, this is a township truck, City of Hayesville truck. And here's just the ones we noted. We may have missed some, but a list of cities that we saw labeled on the vehicles, list of townships, USD, you know, schools were bringing them, WSU brought tires. So you can see it's widely received, and we had huge loads coming in, small trailers, you could see even horse trailers coming in with tires. Lining up, I've counted times sixteen vehicles across W at the same time. You had, you know, rental trucks being brought to the facility, large tire you see on the back of the vehicle, small tires. So it was quite successful. We had constant flow through this, and we received over a hundred and eighty thousand passenger tire equivalents. What that means is a large tire may count for four or five passenger tires. So it's quite a bit, over twenty-six hundred vehicles brought them. I just showed this on the last presentation as well, over a million tires from all of the events we've had. And you can see how the number of vehicles over time was dropping until this last event. And the same with the number of tires, it was dropping until the last event, and I attribute that to what communications did in pushing this out on the social media. They did special Facebook pushes, they got the message out there, and people heard it and came. So that's good that we reached so many people. And you can see in this photo, this is kind of the first day, first morning, there's a barrier back here where my arrow is, and that's where they started dumping the material. There's that barrier on the right of this photo. I was standing up on the hill, taking this photo at the end of the last day. And then a picture of the barrier to get a height idea of how much taller the tires were from that. So it took a while to get rid of all of these tires. We didn't have the final number till last Friday. And the reason for, part of the delay was all of the rain we've been receiving. So on that last day, Tony came out with his drone and took photos of this, and I'd like to have that played for you right now. That's a lot of tires.
A lot of tires.
And I'd like to thank my staff, especially Cindy Lee, who was the project manager, Rhonda Rosenboon, who's out there, and I, you know, we spent all three days there, and also all of the Public Works staff, that couldn't have happened without them, and the great guys out at the County West Yard, and the sheriff's deputies who came out to help with any traffic control we had. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much. I did go out to watch the event. I appreciate exactly what you said, Cindy and you, and the other folks that were involved in it, Public Works, Sheriff's Department, great job. We've got over a million tires out of the environment here in the recent past, which is another great accomplishment, which, again, we'll talk about how we paid for that here in a minute. But again, I want to thank everybody. What I saw out there was spectacular. Also, don't forget, Tony went out and filmed this and put this together, we appreciate that. So I don't, I hope I didn't forget anybody that was involved in this. Again, thank you. I move that we receive and file.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion of the second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you very much. Before we go on to the next one, I want to let everyone in the room know that we're going to lose KPTS at one o'clock today, but we're going to keep rolling and we'll record it, so you'll be able to pick it up online later on if you want to see what happens at the end of this, because I don't know if we'll be done by one o'clock or not, but we will lose KPTS. The other thing is that Commissioner Meitzner and I, we're supposed to be in a meeting at one o'clock today, but we're going to send David Spears, so if you see him leaving the room here shortly, he's not abandoning us, he's representing us. Thank you. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item T, adoption of a resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2020.
Carly, welcome.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Carly Sanchez, Principal Management Analyst with the Budget Office. Since 2000, Cedric County has imposed solid waste fees, which provide partial funding for their program Susan Earlwine just described for you. State law provides that if the county chooses to impose a solid waste fee, it must do so before July first for the fee to be effective for the following calendar year. The action before you today is to impose a solid waste fee for 2020. The fee varies according to classifications. Residential property owners pay a fixed amount per dwelling unit, and commercial and industrial property owners pay an amount based on their waste generation characteristics for their particular property, business, or parcels of property. The resolution proposed for 2020 suggests a range of fees that are an increase over 2019 fees. The residential fee is seven dollars and eighty cents. Tier one is five dollars and three cents. Tier two is six dollars and seventy-one cents. Tier three is eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Tier four is ten dollars and two cents. And tier five, which are large multi-use properties such as the malls, is six dollars and seventy-one cents times the number of business units within that parcel of property. Those fees will be collected through the county's property tax bills. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. If not, then I recommend you adopt the resolution that is before you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions at all, Carly? Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just reflecting on this, in 2015, I think the fee was six eighty-eight for a residence, and it went down to, I think, is that the right number, six eighty-eight? I think that's what we saw.
Twenty fifteen was six dollars and forty-eight cents for a residential.
Six forty-eight, I'm sorry. And we saw it go down a dollar fifty to four eighty-eight, and it went back up, I think, to five eighty-eight since I've been a commissioner. I am curious if anybody's looked at what would be Consumer Price Index conversion of six eighty-eight since 2015? What would that number be?
Well, Commissioner, we did look at it, starting at that six dollar and forty-eight cent rate instead of six eighty...
That's what I meant to say.
Okay. And so with CPI, that would be in current, or for 2020, six dollars and eighty-four cents.
Okay.
Which would be a ninety-six cent increase over the current rate.
And granted, we are doing some things now that we weren't doing back then. I mean, the e-waste, for example, is something we're kind of doing more than we, there was a long period of time we didn't do any waste for many, many years. I would say that, again, I think this is a really great program. The community really does like the things we provide with the, with this fee. I have a concern that we're not necessarily providing anything additional, other than the drug collection. I think that's new, and that's a very, very good idea. I'm glad to see that on the list of things we're going to be doing. But it's a fairly good-sized increase. Do we have an explanation as to why this is going up so much?
We are proposing the rate increase to keep the fund balance at a healthy level. And if you recall, earlier this year, we did use two hundred and fifty thousand in contingency funding for the cleanup at the Deer, let's see, the Deer Lakes Estates.
Yeah, and that was a planned expenditure. That was actually discussed specifically, and that was a known thing when we passed the fee in that year. So I would just say, again, I support everything you're doing, I think this is great. I would like to see the county maybe took a, take a, do a study to consider maybe doing this differently, especially like on the tire and the, we do tree limbs when there's a storm event, for example, but it's a pretty big problem for many people in the county, how to get rid of tree limbs, you know, year-long. And we have an air curtain burner, we've got a, you know, a place to do that type of thing. We actually have a new problem happening in the community on a large event, large items like mattresses and couches, where the transfer station's beginning to charge very high fees to transfer those things. And I think we're, again, I think we're going to start seeing these in roads and things like that, along the sides of roads, maybe in empty parking lots or business dumps, or things like that. So I've asked, just my colleagues, like, you know, I've asked staff, you know, if you agree or not, but we got to keep our eye on this and see what kind of problems we see in the community because of those higher fees. But I'd like to contemplate potentially a bit of a study that would say we ought to have an industrial shredder and do these services year-round. The tire event, for example, we're paying to dispose of those tires. If we had an industrial shredder, we could actually shred those here, and then actually have a value in terms of landfill cover and things like that. Some of these, some of these problems for the community, they don't just happen once every few years. They happen when they happen, and the people like to wait to get rid of those things when that is a problem for them right at the moment. So if they had tree limbs, for example, they're not going to wait, you know, for a storm event to get rid of those trees, they, they'll put them in the landfill. And if they have tires, they may, they may store them in the backyard for a few years. We don't like that idea. We'd like to get rid of them as soon as possible. So I like the idea of discussing somehow a little more way, another way of doing this would be a event that would, should say, an opportunity that's year-round, rather than these things being event-driven. And I think financially, it may not be any more expensive necessarily to do it differently.
Mattresses have changed on disposal in our community. Now, no matter where you take them, they're being charged anywhere, you know, from twenty to thirty dollars per mattress or box springs. And we've talked to the Solid Waste Committee about that at their recent meetings, and they want us to do a year-long study to... meetings, and they want us to do a year-long study to look at how many mattresses are being illegally dumped versus taken care of properly. So we've sent out surveys to the townships and cities to get input from them on how many are they picking up along the road, along with tires and other items, so we can determine, do we need a facility or shredder to handle this? Shredders, about $275,000 that would handle mattresses and tires, but then you have the building and the staff and everything to go along with that. So that's something we do need to look into for the long term.
Again, so I, again, I appreciate the services, and y'all do a wonderful job. I just think that we ought to have some vision for what this, how this might evolve in the future. Providing a year-round service would be better than an event-driven service. And if there's a way to, again, we do our household hazardous waste collection that's still well year-round. It's very successful. And obviously, with the response of 180,000 tires this year being dropped off, it's hugely popular and obviously necessary. And so, you know, trying to keep those things out of the community and out of ditches and out of waterways and out of business dumpsters and reducing mosquitoes, those are all great things, but to do it once a year may not be the right strategy. I'd like to see us contemplate maybe a different way of doing this and do it year-round, rather than, and so with that, that's obviously going to have an impact on this, on this fee. And so again, I'll support the resolution today, but I would like to see us have a vision for evolution to change this to something maybe a little more year-round. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Chairman, and appreciate your comments. Commissioner Howell, I relate this to, there's a reason that the city of Wichita has their stormwater runoff and their flood control under control, because each bill has a ERU, every monthly, every water bill has a small couple of dollars, I think it is. We just, they just raised that from $1.50 after a number of years to $2 or something like that per bill. And so, funding something like this at $8, $7.80 a year clearly has a benefit. If we wanted to go into buying capital equipment and staffing and running year-round, I'm not sure how much time you will spend on it, but just bring us back a number. If it's, if it's a big number, then we can decide if we want to add to this, to this fee, because it's all, to me, it makes a lot of sense. If we want to control it and then expand it, then we can stick it on. And I hope that other, all the property owners would utilize something like that, other than just the ones that abuse it. Most of us don't abuse it. There's a few that abuse it, and so the rest of us could pay for it. But anyway, but I'm appreciative of what you're doing, and I'm supportive of this annual fee.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. I appreciate you bringing this to us.
Thanks, Clerk.
I'm not sure that we need to worry about the CPI when we're talking about something that's $16 a month, or 16 cents a month, as I recall.
That's correct.
So 16 cents a month to provide a service that is hugely popular, I don't know that that is something that we are really going to be criticized on for being above the CPI. So move to adopt the resolution establishing solid waste fees for 2020.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we're going to skip item U. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item V. Consideration of an Award in the Amount of $35,000 from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the Purchase of a New Vehicle Assigned to the Sexually Transmitted Infection Control Program to Perform Disease Investigation Duties for the Sedgwick County Health Department.
Chris, you've been with us a long time today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Board of Health. I'm Chris Stewart, Director of Health Protection in Sedgwick County Health Department. I'm asking for your consideration of a grant award in the amount of $35,000 from the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purchase of a new vehicle for the STI or Sexually Transmitted Infection Control Program. Kansas Department of Health and Environment, KDHE, has end-of-year funds left and would like to give Sedgwick County a one-time grant of $35,000 to purchase a needed vehicle for STI control investigators, known as Disease Intervention Specialists, or DIS. DIS used their personal vehicles and an older 2008 unmarked county car to locate and meet with clients, conduct laboratory collection of blood, and provide counseling and risk reduction. DIS spend much of their time in the field, an important part of their job being to reduce the spread of disease. The mileage cost for STI control staff, personal vehicles, and the new vehicle, along with maintenance cost, is estimated to be approximately $10,000 per year and can be absorbed into the current STI control budget. The new vehicle will be designated for STI control staff, be reliable, and provide more room for testing and counseling clients. This is a time-sensitive issue due to the grant cycle ending June 30th, 2019. I ask that you authorize acceptance of the grant award, the establishment of budget authority, and the addition of the vehicle to fleet inventory. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Seeing no questions whatsoever, I move we authorize acceptance of the grant award and establish budget authority as provided by the finance considerations section of the request and the addition of the vehicle to the fleet inventory.
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Stulz with the County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items W through AD this afternoon.
Thank you. Move to approve whiskey through Alpha Delta. Any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papoon, do we have anything we need to talk about this morning, this afternoon, almost this evening?
No, Mr. Chairman. As you, as we're all aware, we were going to get a legislative update from Jason Watkins yesterday at the staff meeting, but he's going to be coming to a future staff meeting to give us those updates.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Papoon on that? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, next item.
Other.
Do any Commissioners have anything to cover during other? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Going back to what Susan was talking about, we had our...
Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission meetings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street North, Wichita, Kansas 67203. You're watching KPTS, also serving Park City. Support provided by A1 Singer Sewing Center. A1 is an authorized dealer and service repair center for Brother, Fowef, Husqvarna Viking, Singer, and Handy Quilter dealership with over 80 new machines available. Our staff will help you get the most out of your machine at one of our in-store workshops.
Be your own sewing superhero. Heroes come in all shapes and sizes. We begin today with Cheryl Slabota and a cosplay idea to turn you into your favorite animal with furry ears. It's an easy costume and also includes tips for sewing fur. Then Caroline Critchfield is here to make a stylish leash and cage pad for your favorite four-legged friend. Finally, we have a project for the littlest hero and a baby bottle cover from Joanne Banco. They're all superheroes today on It's So Easy. It's So Easy has been made possible in part by Brother International Corporation, a supplier of innovative sewing, embroidery, and crafting machines. Brother at Your Side, Brothersows.com. Coats and Clark, MakeItCoats.com. QT Fabrics, QTFabrics.com. Dritz, Dritz.com. Shannon Fabrics, ShannonFabrics.com. KaiScissors.com. 1503. Heroes Come in All Shapes and Sizes.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Slabota from So Much Cosplay. And today, we're going to be working with faux fur. And there's a few tips that you'll need to know about working with faux fur. Faux fur comes in lots of different colors and lots of different styles, and especially different pile lengths. So you're going to want to choose the faux fur that matches the project that you're trying to work on. In this case, we're going to be making a pair of cosplay ears, just like the ones we have on me. So what you want to do is, and when you're starting to work with faux fur, you're going to want to determine the nap of the fur. The fur is going to lay in a particular direction, and that is the nap. And for these ears, we're going to want the fur to be sticking up from the top of the ear, so we're going to make sure that the point of our ear is going to be in that same direction. So I've just double-checked that my fur is laying in that direction, and that's what I'm going to draw onto the backing of my fur. Now, you can do this either with a piece of chalk or I just use a permanent marker. And I'm just going to draw around my entire piece, my entire pattern piece. And you're never going to see this line, because this is, you're going to cut directly on this line. So we've just got our pattern piece there. Make sure that I can see it when I'm all done. Now, what you want to do when you're cutting faux fur is to only cut through just this backing portion of the fabric. You don't want to cut all the way through to the pile of the fur, or you will be giving your fur a little bad haircut. And when you make that cut, and it's all the way down to the pile of the fur, it's not going to have the same fullness that your, your project will need. So it's going to look like you had given it a bad haircut. So we're going to either take a craft knife and just gently cut through the backing and not all the way through to the front. And you'll see some of the pile appear on the top as you cut through. Another option is to take your scissors and to gently work it through the backing only, just so you know that you're not all the way into the fur pile. And you're just going to gently snip it away. And again, when you pull this apart, get a little more finished here, when you pull this apart, you'll see that you're maintaining the length of the fur as you are making that gentle snip. So you're keeping all the fur together when you do that. The other thing about working with faux fur is that once you peel all of this apart, you're going to have lots of little fur pieces and little fur bits, and they're going to get everywhere into the bottom of your machine and all over you. So I just take a lint roller and lint roll the edges, or use a little piece of tape, and that will clean all those edges up so that you have a nice piece to start working with. So here, you can see that I've maintained the length of the pile of the fur with that piece. And then I cut out a piece of suede cloth that I'm going to use for the interior of the ear. Now, this particular ear is like a wolf ear. It's a bigger ear. It's not as tiny as maybe cat ears or other different kinds of ears. So what I want to do is place my right sides together. Now, you'll see that I...